That was quite a hit. Welcome, everyone, those in the gallery and those watching at home. I won't single Jeff Parentz again, but I couldn't help but resist. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole on Town Council tonight. We'll now turn to the agenda and entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Counsel Frediko?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. All in favor? That's carried. Text, turn to the approval of the previous minutes and entertain a motion for the adoption of those minutes. Mayor Genon?
Motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Thank you for being so timely. All in favor? That's carried. All right, we'll turn to our first and only delegation tonight. We'd like to welcome our friends and from Bike Cochrane and Paul, Robert, and Jim. I see another bit of a crowd out there, so welcome all.
Very good, sound check. Very good. Thank you, Mayor, Council, for taking time to hear from us today. I come to you to talk about new trails that we hear constantly from our community. They want more trails. So this is our first proposal to put new trails into areas here in Cochrane. As a reminder, Bike Cochrane's mission encompasses transportation, recreation, and competition, three areas we grew in 2022. We're very proud to be one of Cochrane's largest 100% volunteer-driven nonprofits that last year counted more than 2% of Cochrane's population as members. I'll briefly touch tonight on our very full calendar of events and activities we're offering for Cochrane's families and children. I also want to mention that Bike Cochrane's Active Transportation Committee is actively working with our Community Services Department to bring forward a five-year investment plan for our pathway network and downtown core. I don't have enough time to get into that project tonight, but we're quite excited to be hosting council and our senior leadership for an e-bike tour on June 13th, where we'll talk more about that. Tonight's session is looking at trails, though. We've identified a new area in Rivercrest that we've been researching and planning in for the last two years. I'll share some of that research and planning, and then I'll close with questions from council as this presentation is intended to provide information for council for your interactions with residents. As I highlighted to council in our fall update last October, 75% of Bike Cochrane's members in 2022 were family members. That shift in membership continues in 2023, as we're now up to almost 700 members again this year, with 74% of them being family members and it's only early springtime. Our corporate sponsors have also renewed and are telling us that our projects are making our community better and a place they want to invest in as well. If you spend a few minutes on our event calendar this month, you'll see an action-packed schedule of events and activities all centered around bikes. After our successful season-opening membership drive in silent auction that raised over $10,000, we're now into full biking season with group rides for many disciplines, our oversubscribed kids' mountain bike camp with 70 riders this year, as we've doubled our capacity, along with our partnership with Cochrane Kiwanis running Bike Safety Day on May 27th, and our upcoming kids' bike race in June as well. We have something for everyone to be involved with as our data-driven Active Transportation Committee runs our traffic and trail counting program, and our trail crew continues to build, maintain, and manage our bike trails on town land, along with our two private land partnerships with the Mount St. Francis Retreat Center and the Cochrane and District Ag Society. Moving from programming to trails, it's important to highlight what we're trying to accomplish in Cochrane's trail system in conjunction with the town. It's our goal that all residents in Cochrane can ride, run, or walk a natural trail without needing a car from their home. We make the distinction between a trail as being a dirt surface or a natural surface and a pathway as being paved. So even though we're involved in the Great Trail Program with Cochrane Rotary, we consider that program a pathway program. As we improve our trail system, we're helping not just mountain bikers who want to avoid driving to Brad Creek or Canmore, but also walkers, trail runners, and dog walkers who want to recreate near their homes. An early note from our trail crowning program this season is that we're consistently seeing 200 to 300 people a day on our ranch trails, and we're only in springtime. We see 500 to 600 people a day already on the main ranch pathway, which is going to be paved this summer, but these are different experiences, and we're trying to enable more people to use bikes for both transportation and recreation, too. So let's briefly look at where we are actively managing legal trails in Cochrane in 2023. This map, which is up on our website, shows our 17 kilometers of biking and multi-use trails in Cochrane. For town trails, you can see the ranch, areas around here, and sunset areas, and you can also see our work with Mount St. Francis and the Ag Society, too. We've been really excited this month as we built our first new flow trail with an excavator, thanks to our volunteer mechanized trail building team, and that's at Buffalo Bean. While this costs dollars, it saves volunteer hours, and what we could do with eight days with an excavator would have taken us well over a month of shovels and rakes, and my back's not getting younger. Now, a quick look at the start of our trail crew season. This shows a project we've been wanting to do for a couple of years, where a very steep set of eroded stairs on Ranch Trail 3 was replaced with a more gradual, natural trail that's now ridable for our youngest bikers. You can see on the right here, that's a young lady there, I think she's about six, and she was on that trail within an hour of us having opened it. In addition, we had a number of trail runners come by as we were finishing this work last weekend tell us that the stairs were hard on the knees, they didn't have natural flow or cadence, so this runs better both directions as well. With the town's support, we've been able to get seven of our trail crew fully certified for chainsaw work this spring. This allows us to keep our trails safe and clear when we have our regular windstorms here in Cochrane. A big shout out to Chris and to Kelly for this work a couple of weeks ago, and a note that we were very proud to add Kelly to our ranks as our first female trail crew leader and certified chainsaw operator this spring. A last shout out here to our trail crew for both identifying this damaged bridge, along with then removing all of the decking and handrail, digging out the damaged berm, replacing that beam, and then getting a new four-by-six beam in place, and replacing all the decking again. Judy and Ed here did great work fixing up what we think was a moose walking across this bridge at Ranch Trail 3. So you can see where that's busted there on the left side. Okay, I showed this map in October, showing where we've opened trails over the last couple of years, and the neighborhoods in green that can now directly ride, run, or walk to natural surface trails. So we call this around 40% of our town, and we see residents from Heritage and Heartland Hills, Heritage Hills and Heartland now biking with their kids to our Buffalo Bean Trails all the time now, which is super exciting and it warms my heart. As we move into 2023, our team wants to extend our trail building and maintenance program into the south of Cochrane to offer more recreational trails to more people in their communities where they live. Bow Ridge and Bow Meadows have existing trails that we're working to bring up to insurable standards, but we saw the area south of the Bow and east of Highway 22 as needing natural space for recreation. Now, of course, I've got to talk numbers. The present population of these south communities, this is River Heights, River Crest, The Willows, River Song, and Precedence, was about 8,000 people in 2022, and adding Greystone, Precedence, and South Bow Landing when they're fully built out, this area will only get more crowded with an estimated 19,500 people who would have walking and cycling access to this area. If the Highway 22 intersections improved, even Fireside could actually access trails in the River Crest area. Giving residents the ability to recreate in their backyard helps with traffic, as those people don't have to drive in order to recreate. It also helps with our community's mental health, as our biggest learning from COVID has been that people crave and seek the ability to engage with nature in their town. In fact, a recent 2022 survey of Canadians shows that 95% of us use trails to enhance our mental health. We have experience in other areas of Cochrane where people want to recreate in nature and there are no official trails. We've seen that if we don't create safe, legal trail options, people tend to make their own, and this doesn't generally work out super well and winds up having negative environmental consequences. So let's zoom in and look next at what's the process to actually look at where should we be building trails. We've identified this environmental reserve in Rivercrest that we've been researching and planning in for the last two years. As you can see from the town pathway map, there are no pathways in this area through the forest. Also, we use a planning product called Strava Metro, which I've spoken about before, to see where people are tracking themselves on foot and on bike. And on the right side, you can see this creates a heat map where the darker colors show more traffic and you can see, and on, show more traffic, and you can see the town's pathway network, our roads and our bridges being used by people on feet and on bike. So it shows that there aren't really a lot of social trails or, you know, informal trails in this environmental reserve yet, but as you'll see a bit later, we're absolutely seeing people beginning to use this area, just not often the way that we want them to. So first step in trail planning is consulting all of the available resources, plans, and maps made available from our town's excellent GIS team and planning teams. I'm a map guy, I love the maps I can get and the data I can get from GIS here. Here you see a map from our recently updated land use bylaw, showing this whole zone as parks and recreation, where a recreation facility or trails is a permitted use by the land use bylaw. We've also read the area and neighborhood structure plans for Greystone, River Heights, River Song, Riviera, River Crest, and the South Bow Landing to inform our planning. Here you see a snip from the River Crest Neighborhood Structure Plan, showing the intention for a regional pathway that would border this environmental reserve and have formal green space for residents in this area. You'll also notice the aspirational hope of a paved regional pathway down to the steel bridge, something we also show in Bike Cochrane's Active Transportation Neighborhood Connectivity Gap Analysis as well. The next item to consider in trail planning is what kind of terrain are we talking about? So using the town's GIS layer, along with the 2019 LiDAR layer, you can see that this is quite steep terrain. So where you've got a lot of topographic lines on top of each other, it looks denser, and so that's what's, what this is showing, and if it weren't this steep, I probably don't have to tell you, it would be filled with houses, right? So one of the benefits of having steep terrain is you can't really build on it. This shows about 120 meters of elevation to play with, and looking at it on Google Earth, you can see trees, vegetation, very little open space here. This is a north-facing forested slope that is challenging from a steepness standpoint and shows why we're not seeing as many social or rogue trails there as maybe we were seeing in Sunset or other areas that were more grasslands, but it's pretty challenging terrain to work in. A next consideration in trail planning is what other infrastructure is in this area? We located the main Atco Natural Gas Line and have the start of a pipeline crossing agreement already negotiated with Atco if we are to move ahead with this trail development plan. Whether Bike Cochrane enters the agreement or the town does is still open for debate, but the short answer is that it's important to be aware of what else is in the area prior to starting formal trail work. Another step in trail development is to consult with the Alberta government. Here you see the output from a historical resources impact assessment that Bike Cochrane filed on the town's behalf last summer to ensure that there are no archaeological sites, historical sites of value, or other reasons that a legal trail here wouldn't make sense. The Alberta government saw no issue with this area, and the HRA was duly filed on the town's behalf last June. So next consideration as we work through preliminary trail planning is how to protect and manage for wildlife conservation. The Alberta government has great resources through environment and parks, and I show a few notes on this slide. It's important to review the Migratory Birds Convention Act, the Federal Species at Risk Act, and then the Fish and Wildlife Internet Mapping Tool seen here on the top right, that shows the awareness of bald eagles, prairie falcons, golden eagles, and even sharp-tailed grouse. By identifying the species we're aware of, we then assess what times of year are the most sensitive. So for these birds, the nesting times are the ones that we worry the most about, and then we review with the wildlife biologist the acceptable level of disturbance and the setback distances to follow. So in our case here in this zone, the guidance is to avoid removing trees during May and to do nest and bird checks even after these times if trees are being removed. So in discussions with one of the local wildlife biologists, Grant Chapman, and a few others, they offered that trail, bike trail building would be considered a low level of disturbance and that we correctly identified the concerns in this space from a wildlife standpoint. One of the last benefits of having trails in our wildland urban interface zone is that it actually builds a small fire break into the forest. In addition, by clearing out our typical trail width of 1.3 meters wide by 2.3 meters high, we've also helped to clear some of the natural fuels that could feed a fire in our community. An extra benefit, too, for firefighters is that if something breaks out in the middle of our environmental reserve, trails give firefighters quicker access to get to them than they would otherwise have, and I mean, I think we're all seeing that in the north right now. If you can get to something early, that absolutely helps. Okay, as we've done a number of site visits, pre-planning walks, and a day visit with the trails team from McIlhany, we've had the opportunity to review what's presently in the environmental reserve today. It's a mix of mostly Aspen and Spruce Forest, which is quite dense in places, and is good habitat for deer and other small mammals as well. You don't have to spend too much time, though, before you run into some human debris and garbage, as people are definitely using this space today, even though, as I said, it's probably not the way that we want them to. To further that point, these images show human activity as people are starting to use this space as their own backyards. As we've described with other landowners we're working with to build trails, if you as the landowner don't choose to manage your area, other people will take the initiative and happily choose to manage it for you. On the right side here, I'd estimate there's easily $1,000 of treated lumber there and quite a nice little treehouse, I might add. Next, we'll look at the plan that we worked on with McIlhany to build natural trails into this area for all residents to enjoy. A major consideration in developing trails in existing areas is to be mindful of the neighborhoods you're touching. This shows up in being careful to assess the sightlines and proximity to people's homes, and to also consider the use of hills, fences, and trees as a means of blocking the trail's view from people's backyards. The trails you see here and also the ones that we'll show on the master plan were all routed to stay at least 20 meters away from someone's existing backyard, and it's Bike Cochrane's view that legal trails should never sit on top of someone's property line or back fence. We see that today with, we'd say, informal or social trails, but if we're going to put a legal trail somewhere, we don't believe it makes sense to have that on someone's back property line. As we look at trails here, it's useful to know that we use a similar trail convention in bike trails as in ski runs, and so green in this context means more beginner and accessible trails. We want to start this trail development by building a backbone of green trails in this area so that all users who walk, trail run, bike, or walk with a pet on leash have a space that they can immediately enjoy. This will help the community embrace these new trails as something we've learned from working with the Big Hill Creek Preservation Society is that people only care about conserving natural areas that they can experience. The intention here would be a wider trail tread that allows and encourages people to walk or ride together rather than in a tight, single file. This would be roughly a one-meter trail tread on the green areas here, and ideally would be machine-built. We would also choose to develop the first of our blue and more advanced trails. These trails would be more suited to biking and trail running, as they would be steeper and more technical in nature than the more open and welcoming green trails. We believe this first stage could be developed by hand by our trail crew, but it would probably take somewhere between a year and two years, but it would be built faster by leveraging machines and possibly professional trail builders. The next stage of the trail development opens up for more blue-focused trails and begins to make a network of trails that are suited for all uses. The more technical trails would appeal to mountain bikers, trail runners, and hikers, whereas the wider trails would be very well-used by the community for walking, enjoying a quiet moment in nature, and getting out for a break during the workday or after work. This would be very similar to the trails we manage at the ranch today and would allow residents in these communities to access nature without needing a car to get there. The last bit of the master plan focuses on the most advanced trails. These are black trails and would involve rock-armoring trails to make them more erosion-proof as they get steeper and more rugged. These more difficult trails are the ones that serve our more adventurous riders and runners, and in many communities, these are what helps to divert adolescents from drugs, vandalism, and other negative activities. We have seen and disassembled multiple jumps and pirate trails in Cochrane already, and we see this as a symptom that we're not serving the needs of that community. We'd rather build these more advanced trails and jumps legally and safely to give our kids somewhere fun and safe to come push their boundaries. When complete, these trails would add about eight kilometers of trails into the south of our community, who could then recreate without needing to drive somewhere. This becomes a local amenity, not a tourism destination, and becomes a reason to buy a home in this area as well. Our intention with the Rivercrest Trail Plan is to bring new trails to our community as soon as we can. While we can hand-build every part of the trail shown in this master plan, and I've got a few of our trail crew members and leaders and stewards here today, in the spirit of bringing these trails to the community sooner, we would propose building the green backbone of this trail network using professional trail builders. What would take our trail crew about 18 months of building by hand, a professional can build in about two weeks of dedicated use. We've worked through a budget for these first 2.7 kilometers of trails, and we see this coming in a bit over $90,000. One way to mitigate the cost so that Bike Cochrane can apply to a provincial grant called the Community Facilities Enhancement Program, a program we've been successfully able to use in order to cover 50% of costs in a matching grant. We'd propose to apply for this program later this fall to double the spending power of the town's budget and then begin to build the green backbone trail in early 2024. We can also look at reducing the costs here by using our trail crew to do portions of the design, clearing, pruning, prepping, but that generally depends on who you choose as a professional trail builder. Some want to work with volunteers, some don't. I'll close with a thank you to all of our Bike Cochrane members, sponsors, and families for supporting our vision of a community connected by bikes. I'd also like to thank Mitch Hamm, our Community Services Director, Trish Klwani, our Manager of Parks and Open Spaces, and Angie Bashaw, our Community Liaison for Parks and Open Spaces. Thank you to them for supporting what Bike Cochrane is trying to do with trails, pathways, and bike parks. I'd also like to thank Matt Hadley from McIlhany, who runs their professional trail consulting service and who made time for a site visit at minus 25 to Rivercrest last fall, and to Shane Beatty, who's here with us today, our trail steward for our hopeful trails in Rivercrest. Finally, I'd also like to thank my wife Natalia and our boys Henry and Walter, who are also with us today, for being patient and understanding, as I've invested many, many hours in Bike Cochrane over the last number of years to get our trail crew where it is today. And with that, I'd like to thank council for taking the time to talk about bike trails, and I'll open for questions.
Wow, that was quite a presentation, thank you. I'll turn to my colleagues then. I'll start with Counsel... McFadden?
Thanks.
Look at the shirt there.
Yeah, just to reiterate, like, you know, wow, that was quite an update, and, you know, first of all, you know, thank you to Bike Cochrane and everything you do, and thank you to your wife Natalie and your kids, Henry and Walter, right, for sharing your dad with us, and appreciate it. So, yes, my big question, like, this is super exciting and the update, and I don't know a single person that doesn't love trails, and I really appreciate that these are going to be at my back door, so if you could do them faster, that'd be great. But so then the big question then is, and you reiterated that it could do faster if you had the support of to do it, and I think I saw in here that there was a number, but so what is, you know, what is the ask of what you're trying to get from giving us an update today?
Yeah, so today's, we're coming to the Committee of the Whole as information, but we're simply putting in front of you that you'd have an option going into this budget season, if that's something that you're interested in, making trails happen faster. We will happily continue building everything we've been doing by hand, but it's really up to this council to say how fast you'd like to move. I think I talked about one of our member, one of our mentor groups, the 670 Collective in Medicine Hat, and they had a similar proposal where they wanted to add new trails, and in that case, their city council said, we want to do this faster, and they built the whole thing professionally and it was done in a year. I'm not saying that's necessarily the right answer here for Cochrane, but simply saying there are options that don't just involve volunteers.
Right, no, I appreciate that. I took a quick scan as you're doing your presentation, was it, was it 90, $90,000, $100,000?
It'd be just inside 100 grand, yeah.
Yeah, just inside 100 grand to make that happen. And you guys have not only, like, done amazing trail work, you've also created an amazing community, right, which is pretty amazing, and also wow factor. In your wow factor, though, because I think this is something that would attract people, it's like, hey, how could I personally donate to make this happen? Are you running a fundraising campaign that I can go on your website and, you know, chip in 50 bucks and get a tax receipt, or?
So, great question, and we'll always take the support of the public in terms of advancing what we're trying to do. We do a few different things that way. To get a tax receipt, we need to be a charitable society, which we're not. It involves a fair amount of extra tax paperwork, which doesn't really make sense within the context of where we are as a society, so we're a registered nonprofit. Now, to answer your other question, you can always become a member of Bike Cochrane, that helps support us, you can be a family member. Single adult member's $40, a family membership's $80. We are also participating in Trail Forks program called Trail Karma. Two weeks ago, there was a Calgary mountain bike group that had 35 people to come on a group ride here in Cochrane, and often what those groups will do, they don't necessarily want to be a member anywhere they ride, but they'll often put money into something called Trail Karma. So we are registered with Trail Forks, and lots of people donate that way. But, yeah, to get back to your point, we'll always take more support, and if you wanted to look at a program where you'd have people, say, volunteer to fund a certain trail, that is absolutely something we've talked to some of our corporate sponsors about, it's a potential. We are doing that at Buffalo Bean right now. We got corporate sponsorship from a group out of Camelback that's helping us build a little kids' bike area there. So it's possible, but we haven't been willing to go out to do a fundraiser if we don't have approval to go ahead to build in this area.
Fair enough, excellent. Well, yeah, thanks again for the update, and I'll...
You're welcome.
Turn the question to Richard, to my colleagues.
Thank you, Counsel McFadden.
Counsel Wilson? Thank you, thank you, Paul and Bike Cochrane, very impressive. Again, I get super excited whenever we're talking about leveraging private-public dollars when you're talking about grants. I wanted to hear a little bit more about your double spending power of the 92K, and you said that was the Community Facilities Enhancement Program, so you mentioned you'd need a commitment from us to be able to chase that grant. Could you elaborate on that? Is that a budget commitment, next budget, or?
Yeah, that's right, so C-THAP program, we actually just applied to one today. It has three intakes in their, what's called their small stream. Their small stream program's up to 125 grand. Their large stream supports programs up to 1.25 million, and in both cases, they're matching programs, where you need to show that you've got funding for the other half, and then they'll contribute, you know, their half. That's run out of the Alberta government. Now, we're in an election season, so I want to believe that program will stick around, but the program we applied for today has another opening in November, and that would be the ideal time to potentially take advantage of that grant funding, again, get, you know, double your money. So it's a good opportunity.
Excellent, so to achieve that, you would essentially, you would need hard dollars put into a budget, next budget, to be able to chase that, though? They need to see those, whether we win the grant or not, we need to have the funding.
Well, we'd probably propose a similar to what we did with the Active Transportation Fund, the federal funds we chased last year, as long as council shows commitment. You know, if that money shows up to do it, I think that would likely be fine. That's generally what they're looking for, is letters of intent.
Wonderful, I'm super excited about this. I'd love to be able to direct administration to give us more information on what we can do to achieve this, because what a wonderful goal. I haven't even heard of Rivercrest Trails before, but I can only imagine what a great addition that'd be to our pathway network. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Counsel Wilson.
Counsel Frediko?
Thanks for the information. Again, I don't need to repeat it, impressive, just from the amount of dedication and work that yourself, as well as all your members, your board, put into this, it's mind-boggling, you know, so congratulations to everybody, and please pass on that thanks. A couple of questions for you. Rivercrest, Riviera, what kind of engagement do you do with the residents that already live in those areas? And I just want to say, I appreciate the fact that you did say you're not looking to build paths on people's backyards. I think that's an important factor, but what kind of engagement do you do with the residents that are already residing there? Because not everybody necessarily wants to have trails right in their backyard.
Sure, I think that's a great question, Counsel Frediko, and, you know, one of the things that we've been doing with our membership, and granted, that's only 2% of the town, is we do regular surveys, and so far, we haven't seen, I'd say, negative pushback in terms of people saying, I don't want trails that I can recreate in my backyard. In fact, we'd look at a lot of the public engagement the town's already done, where people are saying, I want more trails, I want more pathways, not less. Specific to your question about those two communities, they don't have functioning community associations that we could reach out to. We are working with the Bow Meadows Community Association for another project, so we're perfectly happy working in that context if you'd like us to do more community engagement, but there needs to be somebody on the other side of the table, and we simply haven't found anybody there. On both those areas, we did reach out to the developers and spoke with both of them who are developing Tumani and the other one down south there, and they both said they'd be totally behind, you know, chasing and working on programs like this, but they said, well, we just want to make sure that there's nobody that has, you know, community association concerns, but there isn't one there. So we don't really have a good way of doing that community engagement. I'd say that the town's done a fantastic job doing community engagement for a number of things this spring, and I'd say if you wanted to do, you know, further that way, it'd be an option, but I'd say the town's really already spoken. I mean, all of, especially your last budget review, said, we want more pathways, we want more trails, so let's give them more trails and more pathways.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I don't know anybody that's probably going to be like, well, I just, I don't want it, but I do think there's always, in our chairs, there's always that risk that somebody says, well, nobody asked my opinion, right, and even if it's one person. But I do think, I do agree with you, yeah, that I don't believe there's any community associations there, but perhaps just even help from your fellow people around this town. But perhaps just even help from your fellow people around this table that we could maybe push out to get ahold of you if, if anybody does have any concerns, that might be a way that we could also help in our positions. And I guess the only other question that I had was just kind of ongoing maintenance costs of these trails. What does that look like as we all go forward?
Yeah, that's a great question. When we look at our volunteer hours that we put into trails, I did an analysis for last year, about thirty percent of them were, I'd say, trimming, maintenance, pruning, and about sixty, seventy percent are putting new trails in. So it is a cost, but it's a cost that we bear on behalf of the town as part of our, our town stewardship agreement for trails. So it's not zero, but it's also, as we've established new trail areas, one of the ways that we've been scaling is bringing in a new trail steward who's volunteered to say, I care about trails in this community. Ideally, they live there. Shane, who's with us, our Trail Steward for this potential area, lives in that community. And the whole point is that, that, that is a person who says, I care about this, and I will make sure if there's a tree down, if there's work we need to do, that we'll corral the appropriate resources. Our trail crew right now, Counselor Fredenko is sitting a little over a hundred. That's a hundred humans who've said, I care about trails and I will run a shovel for you. Now, a hundred don't show up every time we do trail crew sessions, but we joke about the square root law. We typically get square root that number for different, different activities. So yes, there's a maintenance cost to having trails, but we believe there's still a lot more we can do in our community and not tap out our volunteer base.
Thank you. That's an awesome way to look at it, and I think that there's a lot of people that want to be involved. Sometimes they don't know how to be involved, so you're granting them that opportunity as well, so well done.
What's interesting just to add to that is every time we, like, we, we had our silent auction, we, we presented some of this in terms of this is what our aspirations are for this area. And interestingly, whenever someone sees an opportunity that says, oh, that's a trail I can use from my backyard, I'll show up with a shovel. So when we started talking about Rivercrest, the number of new people saying, you're working or want to work in an area that I live in, that immediately helps me. That means my kids can ride after school. That's exciting, and that gets people engaged. So more trails, bring in more volunteers. Yes, a higher maintenance cost, but we believe that's worth the cost.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counselor Nagel.
Thank you for your presentation. Always very impressed with your level of professionalism you and your group bring to us. It's sincerely appreciated. Just to clarify on the ask here, this would be for all the green trails, correct? The ninety-two thousand dollars?
That's right.
It wouldn't be for the blues or the blacks?
That's correct. It would be our plan right now, if that's the direction council and administration wants to go, that we would hand build all of the, the blue and the black. To be fair, I mean, there, there's different ways you could do it, but we think that's probably the best use of town budget dollars is to give kind of the, the most people the most access. That also builds our backbone for the trails so that it's easier to bring crews in to do different work, similar to the same thing I was saying about firefighting.
And then with this pricing, so can you just clarify where you got that number from? Is this something the town would go to an RFP for? Or is there a specific contractor or vendor you were hoping for? What was the, what was the approach there?
Sure. Great question. So we've looked at what other communities have done, and in this case, working with McIlhany as one of the professional trail builders, they offered some starting pricing and based on unit costs and design costs and swamping costs, all that type of thing. And then I reached out to three different trail builders who build trails and said, this is roughly what we're thinking. How close are we? And they're like, you're dead on. So the thought would be that if the town wanted to go that route, it'd be, it'd be typically an RFP.
Okay, great. Yeah, I would certainly like to see administration bring options forward for us to consider this further. I also have another question for you on a side note. Actually, so I recall, a couple of months ago when we got together for coffee, you and I, we discussed that Bike Cochrane was looking for an option for cyclists to go on sidewalks in unsafe streets, correct? Is that something that the, the Bike Cochrane still wants Council to make a policy change for?
Yeah, so I, I saw your motion last week, Counselor Nagel.
Very timely.
I, I think it's a great thought. I, I'd say at a high level, what it shows if we've got people who are biking on sidewalks, that means we failed somewhere from an infrastructure standpoint. Sidewalks typically in our town are one point two meters wide. That's not wide enough for my kids to cross somebody who's walking, right? So we'd say it's not ideal to have people on bikes on sidewalks in the shared space. Now, having said that, what our nineteen ninety-six bicycle bylaw says is that kids under twelve are perfectly legally able to ride sidewalks. And then there's no speaking about, well, what about anybody else? I liked your thought about, well, if you've got a bike bell, then you're cleared. When we took the, the concerns we have with the present bylaw and the sidewalk, I'd say, lack of clarity to your enforcement department, their comment was, well, Paul, we'd never give anybody a ticket for riding on the sidewalk. And I said, well, that's great, but at a high level, you probably need to have more actual policy and bylaw around that. And so one of the things that we brought with the Active Transportation Fund last year was that grant portion that was a hundred percent funded to actually do policy study around things like sidewalks and gravel roads that, you know, you don't totally own and things like that. And I think that's probably the better path forward is to do it more formally. Many communities, Red Deer is a good example, says anybody can ride on, on sidewalks. Most of their sidewalk spec is one point eight meters. It's a little bit better. Three meters is generally considered a multi-use pathway width, and that gives you enough space to happily pass and, you know, have a kid wobbling and not hit anybody. So while I like the thought behind your motion, I think probably the better way as a community is to look at where we've got gaps in our infrastructure. And the sidewalk I know that you were using to bike to work, you know, in the summer during COVID, is right along Railway Street. And you'd say, well, there's a, there's a bike lane there, and it's like, yeah, but the bike lane's not protected. My wife won't ride on it. My kids won't ride on it. So that's not a successful piece of infrastructure. The fact that you've got people on sidewalks is a symptom of the problem that we haven't looked at how to get around. And what we look to be able to do on June thirteenth is to give this council and senior administration a look at where we think there are problems, and then what's an appropriate way to deal with that in a long-term, I, I think thoughtful way to actually get us where we want our community to be. So we're not worried about hitting people on sidewalks, because there should never be that conflict. That's not fair to walkers. It's not fair to bikers.
Okay, great. Just wanted to give you the opportunity to comment on it. Yep.
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Flowers.
Hi. I'm going to be repetitive, but I wanted to say that I'm always impressed by your passion and how hard your group works to make such a difference in Cochrane. So many people want to move here because of special things like this. I do like the idea of your group being involved with the planning of new communities, because we could avoid some of these problems that we have if we thought it through ahead of time. And your bike safety and your number of family members that are involved is always very impressive. The only question I had was about June thirteenth. What is the plan for showing council around?
Yes, yeah. So our Active Transportation Committee is looking forward to doing a, a short presentation with council to give you a sense of what, what we see as some of the major gaps. We're then going to do a crayon exercise where you're going to be doing your own routing to say what's a safe route and what isn't. Then we're going to ride it, and then we're going to come back and have a little bite of lunch and talk about it. And then ideally, what that should lead to is moving towards more of a multi-year funding proposal to actually catch ourselves up from a neighborhood connectivity, downtown connectivity, and to allow people to get around on, on bikes, on scooters, on motorized scooters and walking. And I'm excited that you're going to be joining us. That's why we did get e-bikes, so some of our hills. E-bikes are great because they flatten a lot of those hills. You know, I'm going to be pulling my six-year-old with a towie back up to sunset tonight, and I'd be a lot happier if I had an e-bike.
Mayor Junong.
Yeah, thank you. Paul, appreciate your presentation. As all of my colleagues have said, well done, very professional. Lot of information in there. You guys have obviously done, well, you said a couple of years of work on this. My question and I guess my concerns are, and again, I'm a huge supporter of cycling and everything that you've done. It's no secret. But similar to the questions that Counselor Frediko has asked, and I think it's one thing to be at this stage in the planning stage where faces where everybody who knows about it is generally on, on board and on side, and it's, we can feel the momentum building. It's the, when we go to start to put shovels in the ground and those residents in that area that this new use is being introduced into. I think that's when we get the feedback. So I think as we contemplate moving forward, and again, I'm supportive of the project, it's how do we interface with the existing residential neighborhood that's there? And I don't, I'm not forecasting that there will be a great upswell of negativity, just that I think we need to do a good job of informing. So, and I, I haven't heard that you haven't said that that's not necessary and that you want to overstep that. But I do think we need to do more work on that, so I'm basically kind of sending that through to administration as if it sounds like we're talking about moving this to the next step, but I, I really do think we need to, to go the next level, whatever that is, even if it's, it's not a large residential area there, but we can probably campaign that whole street there and just say, this is what's happening. Because my first reaction when I saw it at your event the other night was, wow, that's a lot of trails right up close to, to backyards. But then hearing your proposal tonight, it's a minimum twenty-meter setback. So if we're out there and walking that, that's a different feeling than looking at a dotted line on a map. So I just think we have a gap to fill there, and I just wanted to bring that.
Sure. Yeah, and Mayor Junong, I think that's a very valid piece of concern. Generally, what we find is it really doesn't matter what the proposal is. It doesn't matter what the project is. I could give every kid in Cochrane a free bucket of ice cream, and they're going to complain it's the wrong flavor. So it honestly doesn't matter. You're always going to get some amount of negative feedback, and it doesn't really matter how much, you know, engagement or community consultation you do. We would look at it and say, we want our community's growing, and we, we're planning for a, a town of fifty thousand people. And if we're not getting ahead of that and starting to plan for recreation for those, what I was saying, nineteen thousand five hundred people, the south part of the river, I mean, I think you're going to have a bigger problem there. Do I think that you're not going to have a single email, people say, I don't want this? It's like, well, sure, you'll probably get one or two, but I think by and large, the balance would tell you it's, it's the right thing to do, and the community's already told us that that's what they want is more trails and more pathways. I, we were trying to look at this a year ago and say, how do we engage the community? There's no community associations in either of these two areas. There's, you know, new people coming in every day. Do I send Bike Cochrane volunteers to everybody's door with a doorknocker and a map? Like, I, I don't know what the right thing is to do, where you've already done such a good job for community engagement to say, what do you want for amenities? People say they want trails and pathways, so let's give them trails and pathways.
Yeah, no, I'm not, not arguing at all. And I'm not saying that I think we should stop everything because we might get one or two people saying no to it. I'm just saying I think we need to be proactive in engaging and informing people that what is going there, because I think there, there would be a real missed opportunity, and I think people will, in the, if they don't understand what it is, they'll create their own narrative, and then we'll be on defense and fighting for something rather than having people engaged and part of the solution at the beginning.
And part of the reason we were engaging with McIlhany was to get a bit of a sense of how would you strategically do this? They've done it in a lot of different communities across the world, actually. Matt was just coming back from the Faroe Islands doing trail work there. Super impressive individual. But what he commented was, if you give people something that they can access immediately, in this case, that's why we chose to adopt doing the green wider trails first, then people are getting something immediately. If we chose to start building downhill, black, crazy jump lines first, I, we just don't think that's going to be the right answer. But yeah, I, I think the idea of how do you get a bit more community engagement in terms of this is what we're thinking? Again, if you, if you put it out and say, well, if anybody has any negativity, then we won't ever do it, you'll never do a single project, right? You're always going to get some pushback. What's the right level of engagement or targeted community engagement? I think your communication team's probably got a better idea than that than I do.
Yeah. Yeah, the other, I guess, I, I'm a, I'm trying to be a full supporter of the, the project and just trying to outline some of the, the flags that I think we'll see instead of just sort of in advance of them popping up, so. Yeah. Thanks for your work. Appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you, guys, for all the work that you're doing in the community.
Yeah, I'll just kind of try to bring it home. So, you know, as my council colleagues have said, I mean, your organization is a, a model example of professionalism, passion that, you know, we've talked in the past where, you know, where we like to be able to support an organization and get out of its way, because it actually is more successful with, with this out of the way than it is if we were actively involved. But I do recognize that we have a part to play. Just picking up, and again, not to belabor the point, but I, I think, yes, everybody talks about wishing to have more trails and, and to be able to get around Cochrane, but I think, what I think they, I hear the mayor and Counselor Frediko saying is, it's just, I just, you might want to look at the awareness campaign in terms of public engagement, right? And I think that there are people out there. It's kind of the NIMBY theory, right? While they want trails, they just don't want it in their backyard, right? And so I think there, you know, my takeaway, or at least a summary I would have for you, and, and hope that others in your group are hearing this as well, is that you may wish to think about that as part of your plan. I mean, everything else is professionally done, and, you know, you guys are just over the top in terms of how you do your due diligence. But I think, with all due respect, I think you may want to, to take that as one of the takeaways. The other things that I've heard then are, generally, I think there's a, a sense around the table that administrate or the council would like administration, like, the potential options of bringing this back in terms of being able to see how we could move this request forward. And I see some nodding heads, so that's, that's good. And then probably clarity just around what Counselor Nagel was saying in terms of the possible government grants. And I think Counselor Wilson was picking this up, and well, how do we, how do we leverage that in working together? So on behalf of council, thank you very much again for a very professional, very passionate presentation, and thank you to your organization for all the good work they do in our community.
Thank you, Counselor Reed, and all of the council and your mayor. Cheers.
Okay, we're going to move on then to the business part of the agenda. This is the Budget Process Task Force update, and our CEO, Mr. Derek Cott, is going to move to the podium and give us a presentation.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Reed and council. It's not too often after a delegation that I'm like, oh, boy, that's a tough act to follow here, so. But pleased to be in front of you and to bring an update on, on behalf of the Budget Task Force. Obviously, a, a number of your council colleagues sit on that task force and will, I'm sure, be happy to add their comments after I work through a brief presentation. Just a reminder that the impetus for the task force came out of the budget deliberations this past fall, where there was some dialogue and expression of some interest in adjustments and improvements to the budget process, in particular, how it's presented, both the council and, and the public, after which administration recommended that a task force might be the way to proceed, which we are now engaged in. The members of the task force, including members of council, Mayor Junong, Counselor Frediko, Counselor Wilson, and note, of note there, Counselor Frediko is serving as Chair of the Committee, myself, Mr. Alvin Alim, who I believe council had the privilege of meeting a few weeks ago, our new Director of Finance and Information Services, Kristen Hubrecht from Intergovernmental Operations and Communications, Kevin Blanchett, Corporate Strategy, and Haley Harris, who is providing admin support to the task force. We have had, I believe, three meetings of the task force, and a, a good portion of that time has been spent going through some examples of what we consider best practices from across Alberta and even some other parts of Canada. The topics of discussion have included the look and feel of budget documents. The information has been very interesting and I think informative. We've also spent some time at the task force and are now happy to ensure council's aware of the resource challenges. As I mentioned, Mr. Alim newly with us now for a couple of weeks. It will take him some time to get fully integrated into the budget process. But he's already expressed some, some, some great excitement about the early conversations. He, he did attend our, our last meeting. We've also taken an, an approach of trying to identify what we've described as short, medium and long-term wins in terms of actions that could be taken to improve the budget process. Basically, a short-term win, something that we believe could be effectively implemented as soon as this coming budget cycle. Medium-term win within the next two budget cycles, and long-term wins, things that we might think about beyond that in terms of improving our processes. Just an example of some of the budget documents and processes that we've taken a look at. You can see some similar communities from our Midsize Cities Group here in Alberta, as well as some examples from other provinces, Winnipeg and, and Kelowna as examples. Just go through a few examples of some of the pieces that have come out of there. Things such as the way they display individual, in this case, counselor budgets, a simple reader's guide so that someone who's looking at the budget could say, what am I going to see here? What is this information intended for? What are some verbiage pieces that you might encounter? A few different organizational charts that I, I think supported some information. Inclusion of, you know, FTEs, for example, in the, in this case, we particularly liked the addition of the residents, ultimately driving what this organization is all, all about there through, I believe that's Red Deer County. And some other graphical representations that we have taken out as good examples. I believe this case is a breakdown of the utility bill and, and what that looks like. As mentioned, the, there certainly has been some internal resource challenges as the task force has started up, had a number of personnel changes, and, and so there is some limitations to the immediate horsepower that can be placed behind this. I, I don't think it has impacted the early stages of this process as they've been mostly exploratory and gathering of information. And theoretically, we're gaining the ability to take. and gathering of information, and theoretically, we're gaining the ability to take action as those vacancies have been filled, and those individuals are coming up to speed quickly. Certainly excited as well as part of this, it's a unique time to have new team members coming on board as they bring their perspective and their experience, which can help inform the process as well. Always nice to have a fresh set of eyes. Just wanted to take a moment as well to highlight a few of what we've described, quick wins. Mentioned the reader summaries, a comprehensive and cohesive FTE outline, as well as including that in the departmental sections, clear deliverables for each department, as in what is happening in relation to those costs and revenues identified in, in the various departments, a better outline of the variances that we are experiencing in any given budget year, as well as outlining what's proportion of the total budget are we talking about in any given section. These are all things that we think are fairly quick to implement, but that would create a much smoother experience, both for council and also members of the public who might be interacting with the budget. We are also currently engaged in a, a public engagement. I believe this has been noted, perhaps via email, but just to bring council up to speed, one of the processes I believe that we were aware of through the city of Leduc was the use of a third party to create and implement a survey that will ultimately be what we would describe as statistically significant, that will, I think, give us great information to work with, will be underway early July is when council can expect to see the results of that, and, and we're really looking forward to that. We're going to be including mailouts, as well as live calls to a broad cross-section of the community to ensure that we're generating a really great sample of residents and how they feel about the budgetary impacts on their particular households. Next steps, the next task force meeting is set for June 8th. We are looking to begin to identify specific tasks and assign them to internal teams to ensure that those identified quick wins don't get lost, and that they actually do become a part of this process as quickly as possible, and will soon be able to review the public engagement report as it comes forward. I believe that is it for my report. I would then, before we open up to council, deputy mayor, if you please use you, I would just suggest that any members of the task force from council would be permitted to add any of their thoughts before we open it up to questions.
Hesitate, go ahead.
I was a little hesitant. I, I think this is great. I mean, it does really describe what we've been able to accomplish in three quick meetings, which isn't a ton, but I think just for my colleagues around the table, that our major focus has been, you know, how do, how do we not have necessarily a, a public repeat of, of last year, right? How do we get the information to our residents? How is it more clear? How is it more understandable? How are we better setting ourselves all up for success as we go out to the public to talk about what's happening in the budget? And that's really been a lot of our focus. Like Mr. Derkott said, we've really been looking over other budgets. What are other places doing? How are they getting that information across? What does it look like? And, and it may not be 100% perfect this year, but I can say that it's, I'm excited to see where it is going to go, and I think it's going to be an ongoing process of making sure that we are adjusting some of those concerns that we had last year. The one thing I think that was missed in is that, you know, we're going to look back over the questions. There was a big group collected, group of collective questions last year that we had during the process, that we want to make sure that whatever, whatever's going forward, that we will have already addressed those. They're not going to be of concern coming forward this year, because that's something that I think that is important to all of us around the table. But that's really all I wanted to add. I think that we're excited to hear you guys' suggestions of what you think so far, and public engagement, like that's, that's going to be the hugest one for me, is, is to how do we make sure that we're here, not only hearing from the public, but setting up as many opportunities as we can to not be involved in creating the budget, obviously, but in understanding what they're really looking for, and, and maybe what we missed on.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson?
Thank you, just to, for the, to give the group some confidence on what's going on with, with this group. I think even though we've had limited meetings, they've been very to the point, and I think objective-driven, we're, we're accomplishing quite a bit. I'm, I'm especially excited about the quick win list that we've generated, some things that we can do quite immediately, hopefully within the next budget cycle, this upcoming budget even, to improve our process. Also happy to report that a lot of the quick wins, I feel, are relatively resource-limited and draw. Like, we're not looking to pull any new swords from the stone, simply finding communities that are doing things in a way we would like to see done, and copying their format, and using it here so that we can make these things happen fast. In particular, when we were looking at the list that Mr. Derkott had up there, we were talking about a deliverable section, just that simple change for me is, is very exciting, where I think it gives us some definable metrics to analyze success or failure, failure, when we're breaking it down department-level during budget time. I think that'll lead to some, to some of the, some of the gaps in the budget debate and analysis that I'm seeing, where we can actually talk about, are we achieving success, not just from a cost standpoint, but from a value proposition standpoint, department by department. I'm excited about that. And finally, we, we had a little bit of discussion at the, at the group about, is our award, or is our aim to win a budgetary award? Are we trying to have the best budget in Alberta, or is our award, is our aim to make sure that when it comes to budget time, this group of seven people that are sitting here are happy with the process? And that's, or at least our North Star, that's my North Star, is that our, our goal is that we are happy with this, and if we submit this and end up getting any award recognition from it, great, but that's not our end goal. The end goal is to make sure the seven people around this table are much happier with the process. So if that gives any confidence or color to the process for the rest of the group.
Mayor Janong, I'm going to bring the, this part of the presentation home.
Thank you. Yeah, as the third member of council sitting on the task force, in addition to the presentation and to what councillor Fedeko and Wilson have added, the only thing that I would add in addition is that we quickly realized, or had conversations around, that it's not the financial information that's in question, it's not the finance department that's in question. So how our finances are actually quantified, it's how they're being delivered and shared with council or the community, is really where the process piece that we're focusing on. So I just wanted to highlight that, that there may be through some discussions over budget, that might have been drawn into question, and that is not the, that's not the case. That's, so we've been putting our focus on, on the process itself.
Great, thank you. Councillor McFadden, you're up.
Excellent. Yeah, thanks so much for the update, and to, and thank you to the rest of the staff, and my colleagues that have stepped up and put in some extra meetings. I really, you know, appreciate kind of seeing what's been able to accomplish, even just three meetings. I like the, the quick wins, these are already kind of, you know, making me feel more comfortable with the process that we're trying to improve, and that's great, and I appreciate the colleagues that have reached out to kind of, you know, let me know what's going on, or to make sure that any of my thoughts are kind of being included in that. So thank you for taking the time for that, I really appreciate it. And, you know, so often I wander back and, and look through different other examples, and one of the ones that I liked, and maybe, I'm not sure if the team's considering just yet, is making sure that the demographics from the recent census is included into the budget process, so that we have a better understanding, much like with the survey, so that it's statistically accurate, to make sure that we statistically understand who our community is today, and have an idea of what services we should be providing them. So just that, I, I saw a couple of them were building kind of the demographics into the budget process as well. So, but yeah, thank you so much to the team. I think this is a great step forward, and, you know, and just, you know, demonstrating how clean a budget process can be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Looking down the table, seeing none others. So just, my takeaways, or summarizing it, would be that, thank you to the members of the task force and the administration in terms of being able to pull this together so quickly. I agree, I think the quick win list is very impressive, and in particular, I like the, the North Star in terms of clarity for, for council, in terms of being able to make informed decisions. I mean, just for the general public, it, it's a tough job going through that budget process, you know? We literally spend, seems to be like four or five, maybe even a week in terms of being able to do that, and so, while the general public, as councillor Fedeko has indicated, can't necessarily be part of that process, at least providing information that makes it clear for them, as well as ourselves, is appropriate. So I love that North Star focus. And then just that last comment, councillor McFadden, and that is that it'd be interesting to have demographic, current demographic information as part of that budget process, so we actually see who we're talking about in terms of the citizens of our community. So on behalf of a council, and the members of the task force, thank you, Mike, for your presentation.
Thank you very much, and suggestions are still welcome. Please do send those through as you encounter them or think about them. The committee will be very happy to look, look through those as we go. You never know when you might encounter something that makes sense, and we'd be happy to see them. I did just want to note as well, there was discussion at, in the fall of the budget, we did submit our 2023 budget to the GFOA Government Finance Officers of Alberta for consideration for an award. We have not yet heard back, but I just wanted to clarify that we did submit that process, and we are looking forward to hearing back, because they do give some feedback as well, and so likely that will come with some good information that will support this process as well.
Well, well done. Interesting. Thank you. Okay, we're talk to, have Mr. Hamm come up, Mitch, in terms of COLT direction. Do you want to take a five-minute break?
Perhaps I could suggest a five-minute break, because this might be a while.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, and then acknowledge that councillor Wilson is not going to participate in this discussion, so. Five minutes?
Seven oh five.
Seven oh five. Okay, council, we'll call the meeting back to order. I would like to get council support to make a modification to the agenda, and that is that we would have a Greystone developer update prior to the COLT direction. Is, is there anybody in the council who would have a concern with that? Okay. And then councillor Wilson will, do we want to deal with yours after Greystone or now?
I can deal with it now if you like. After Greystone, I'll remove myself from the transit discussion, simply because I've done that in the past, and for any perceived or real conflict of interest, I just won't sit for the information, because I won't sit for the voting portion when it comes to a council meeting near us.
Okay, so that's noted. All right. Okay, thanks councillor Wilson. Drew, we'll turn it over to you. Oh, Mr. Heinemann, sorry.
That's fine. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Reed and the rest of council. Excited about this upcoming presentation. Many of you have heard from administration several times on Greystone as we go through the development process, but one of the benefits of the committee as a whole is the opportunity now, and we'd heard from you also saying, to get some updates for not only yourselves, but also for the general public on the progress of this important development for Cochrane. So Mr. Josh Hagan from Burns West is willing to, you know, come to council and provide a presentation on all the great work that they're doing in our community, and I'm going to turn it over to him. But we're really excited about this, because I think it provides an opportunity not only to learn more about Greystone, but in the future, we're hoping to have other developers come forward and do similar presentations for you and for the public.
Thank you, that was a great introduction. Josh, welcome again.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Reed, members of council. Administration, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, appreciate it. A little bit different, different floor, if you will, but excited to walk you guys through everything that's happening in Greystone. Talking with Drew in kind of preparation for this, tried to figure out how to best tailor it, and my initial reaction was, oh, let's do what, what we've been doing before, what's happening now, where we're going, but I thought it switched it up a bit from that. I think it's probably important, and you'll see in my presentation, of course, to kind of walk you through a little bit of the, the dollars and cents, and, and the, the investment that not only the Burns family, Burns West, is, is putting into, into the development, but also kind of the return on investment for, for council and decisions, and the decisions that you guys make. but also kind of the return on investment for council and decisions and the decisions that you guys make ultimately through assessed value and property taxes. So I don't get into a lot of details on that front. I'm not a, I'm not an appraiser, but I think I've got some some general ballpark numbers for you. So with that being said, let's just hop right into the numbers. Hundred million dollars in development costs. So this is the expected total costs for the Burns family to fully develop Greystone. This dates back to the planning approvals, the seven million dollars in reclamation that was done on the property to get our clean bill of health from the province and ultimately turn it into a development property. Within that, kind of a couple of highlighted items, twenty million dollars in municipal fees, including about five million bucks we're going to be cutting in checks over the next three months. But obviously, those municipal fees are important from your guys' perspective when it comes to investing in infrastructure in Cochrane. Ten million dollars in parks and storm ponds, so on the more passive active spaces that, you know, residents beyond just Greystone can enjoy. There's that type of a number that's going to be going into into the Greystone community. Now, I'll get into that in a little bit. So my quick math, full caveat, my quick math, I think quite comfortably, the assessed value for the property, all the buildings, homes, et cetera, will be north of half a billion dollars. Broken out to, you know, based on, you know, estimated number of multifamily condo units, single family duplex townhomes, that was more the easier stuff, and a ballpark figure on on all the commercial retail and business. So again, I think it's actually going to be a fair bit north of that. But just to help you guys understand, for a community like Greystone, just under a hundred and fifty gross acres, there's just quite a bit, not only that goes into the ground, but comes out of it as well. And obviously, happy to flip back and forth throughout the presentation if you want. But a little bit more granular, so for last year and this year, which is really the, last year was the first major development year from a servicing perspective, eleven and a half million dollars in levies between last year and this year and next year that we have to make. Wanted to highlight seven and a half million dollars for gas, electrical, and telecommunications. Obviously, we're in a world that's becoming more dependent on electricity and trying to become less dependent on on the fossil fuels. So oversizing the infrastructure is a key component for what we're doing now and going forward, certainly for any developer. Greystone in particular, I think because of the commercial load demand that's anticipated in there, we are planning to have EV charging stations in there as well. In order to be able to do that, you have to have the guts to be able to accommodate that. So a pretty big price tag. Shallow utilities in general have gone up substantially, at least thirty percent the last couple of years. Some of it's supply and demand, a lot of it is is just oversizing that's required. So in addition to that, just see along River Avenue, it's actually actively happening as we speak. There is upgrading along that, all part to to accommodate the full buildout of Greystone. The parks and pond component broken down a little bit more for you. So the ten acre, which I'll have slides on later, the ten acre community park is coming in at about three and a half million dollars. There's a bunch of stuff I'll talk about later. The urban plaza, the heart of the community, right next to the storm pond, just on the north side of the co-op site. Another about a million and a half dollars. Got something pretty, pretty cool planned for that. And the storm pond itself, about three and a half million dollars, including a regional pathway, some, some benches and entries, et cetera. So also, hopefully you guys can see the the phasing map. I know it's a little bit small. My eyes are tired tonight. But wanted to also update you guys on really what's happening through our first six phases of development. There's just over half, so by the time we're completed this year, from a land development perspective, just over half of Greystone will be fully serviced. Big milestone for us, you know, we, we went, we did a lot of work, obviously, last year and this year. Included in that, of course, is the storm pond, which we've just finished all the looming around. You're going to start to see a regional pathway go in over the next week and a half, benches, et cetera. Four parks are included as part of the first four, first six phases of development. What's interesting for Greystone, one of the unique parts to it, because a third of the community is essentially commercial business retail, the allocation for that, like there's typically a ten percent MR that goes to any type of community, from a residential perspective, we're actually over dedicated because we're taking the majority of the of the MR that would have been allocated more traditionally in the in the employment area and added it into the residential area. So that's pretty cool. Co-op Hotel and High Street. So those are key features that will be completed on our end. And you're going to start to see buildings coming out of the ground later this fall and into next year. Obviously, co-op being just in phase one, which is the yellow area, just north of the Spray Lake, or sorry, SLS Center. They're going in for their DP, I believe it's next week. I've got a quick rendering on that as well. We're super excited for co-op and all that they're going to bring to 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 this community. And then the hotel, which is across the street over in phase three. Just in final discussions and negotiations, I know it's been a bit of a slow process. I keep saying that we're just about there, we're just about there, but we are just about there. I firmly believe we'll be at least under contract here by the end of twenty three. Candidly, I thought the hotel was going to be something mid-development or later. It's one of those uses that, that's kind of where things tend to go. But there's been some strong interest, obviously, with the announcement of just over one million visitors plus per year. For the SLS Center, that's a huge draw to somebody looking to invest in a hotel. But certainly a very well-known name brand hotel that we're just trying to dot the i's and cross the t's with. High Street Retail Commercial. So extending up from basically the western boundary of the of the rec center, splitting the hotel and 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 co-op and then kind of angling off to to the left is our High Street. A huge pedestrian focal point, angled parking in there. The urban plaza that I was just briefly talking about is the very south edge of Phase Four and just north of of co-op. We're investing a good chunk of change into the public realm space, decorative concrete. A lot of landscaping going to make it, make it look pretty, pretty special. Certainly on Phase Four, so the parcel that butts just to the north of the urban plaza, again, I've got some renderings a little bit later on. We will be having a restaurant, a good named restaurant with, certainly in the summer months, the ideal months, some outdoor patio areas spilling on also to that urban plaza. So a pretty cool, pretty cool space-making opportunity that we're currently in the design phase on. Also, phases one to six, a total of two hundred and eighty-seven lots predominantly residential, I think two eighty-one. Our residential, or sorry, that's, what is that, two seventy-nine? And then three medium to high-density multifamily sites are also going to be serviced as a result of this. One is going to be breaking ground in July. It's called Vertos through Akro. It's a hundred and fifty unit, I think it's spread across eleven or twelve buildings, stacked townhouse, which will be directly north of the big ten acre park, which is part of Phase Five and in the pink. We'll also be bringing on five commercial lots. Actually, I believe that is, no, five commercial lots when you factor in the hotel. Sorry, I put this together this morning. So yeah, pretty, pretty exciting stuff, certainly starting to get that non-residential component going as well. I know you guys are all aware of this. You certainly approved all the land uses, but important to highlight, highlight as well. Related to phases one and three, we are just finishing off the concrete work in there. We will be paving and it'll be paved black by the end of June, which is really exciting. That's going to certainly help people looking to kind of wanting to get onto the property more and drive around in a safe fashion. So we're looking forward to that. The east-west connection, so connecting River Avenue over to Griffin Road through the community of Greystone. That will also be completed by the end of this year. The design back during the neighborhood plan stage, probably five or so years ago. Instead of having a bit of a thorough, fair raceway running through it, we kind of, the agreement was to kind of meander through the community. So Phase Two and Phase Five, Phase Three and Phase One, all along the south half, there is a connecting roadway that will be completed a year later this summer into the early fall, which of course is some good news for those. It'll be eventually getting to co-op, et cetera, and some of the other amenities that Greystone offers. River Avenue upgrades, mentioned just previously. The, the electrical system is being upgraded. It is a bit of a phased approach, which I appreciate is probably a little painful for some of you. But Phase Two, which is obviously the south half along River Avenue, that will all be going underground. It was supposed to be two weeks ago, then it was supposed to be last week. It is very close. Very excited because that'll ultimately mean that Phase Two is officially energized and a bunch more buildings are going to grow up, but all those are already a bunch happening now. But along with that, of course, we'll be putting a regional pathway along River Avenue. And that will extend from our northern boundary once we complete that, but certainly along the Phase Two edge all the way down to and including connecting into the Trans-Canada Trail. I believe there was some trail conversation earlier, so we're happy to contribute and participate in that, obviously, not only for the residents of Greystone, but for 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 the neighboring residents as well. That pathway connection will be both on the on the west side, which is River Avenue, and over on the east side, just by in between the Bull River Rivers Edge Campground and Spray Lakes, or Spray Lakes Sports Center. Okay, so uniquely Greystone, live, work, play. You've heard that probably quite a bit. We have it certainly advertised. So focusing on the live, important that I wanted you guys to know, really every type of residential that you can think of, we're going to be offering in Greystone. You know, starting from the west, heading more east towards the center, less dense. As you get more closer to the commercial side, it's it's higher density. So laned singles, front onto River Avenue. I know there was a lot of discussion on that particular topic here a few years ago, but I think it's a really good way to frame entering the community. Front drive, single family, which should be our our most premium, if you will. Product offering is kind of on the southern part of Phase Two. Show home, by the way, one of them is open, Prominent Homes. So if you guys are interested in checking out a Greystone show home, it is open. One of my last slides talks about our grand opening in the fall, so they're quite a bit ahead of schedule. But it's certainly a pretty nice home to get in and see. I just checked it out for the first time earlier this week. I'm sorry, last week. Duplex product offering, townhomes, stacked townhomes, and then high-density condos. So high-density condos, appreciate there has been some conversations around embracing density more. Happy to hear that, pleased to support that and look forward to submitting our proposal from a land use redesignation perspective in, I don't want to say the near future, but certainly in in twenty twenty-four. We've got lots going on right now. But yeah, I do, I do look forward to connecting with Drew and his team and trying to explore where to to best look at integrating some of that. I got a pretty good idea. There's a couple of lots on the north side of the pond that I think could really frame and activate the pond and the rest of the uses around there. But that's a topic, I think, for another day unless, of course, you guys have questions that I'm happy to answer them. But that's kind of initial thinking on that. Also, additional forms of housing, so affordable housing and rental. Obviously, it's a big topic in Canada and as it has been in the States for a few years now. We definitely do have two rental sites, higher-density sites coming in. Avalon, excited to bring them into Cochrane. They do a great product. And Akro as well, will be incorporating a rental product type for Greystone. Seniors living, so it's actually a group here in Cochrane, I can't say too much, but that I've been actively engaged with, really good group. And I've told them that we're not papering anything for at least a year. There was a lot going on, but certainly continuing the conversations with them and pretty excited to to obviously support local, but try and and get get a deal done with them. And they're certainly focused on the more senior fifty-five-plus type of living. So yeah, we're we're excited to announce that when it when it makes sense. And then lastly, possible mixed-use retail upgrade, so certainly the High Street. You know, I guess when I think of Greystone and what it can be, you know, I often, maybe it's because I used to live near there, kind of think a little bit about Marta Loop and kind of some of the opportunities that are happening there. I think there there could be that here in Greystone. It's a little bit more finicky, certainly to try and integrate that, but it would be, it would be pretty cool to kind of embrace that type of a development along that High Street. So I threw it in there and we'll see what happens. Okay, uniquely Greystone. We talked about live, now this is work. So a couple of things, not sure if you guys are aware, but we are in the final stages of approval for our Greystone Discovery Center. So Burns West-sponsored center, it's about a thousand square feet. It will be backing onto the pond, or as Akro has affectionately labeled it in their design, lake. So the Greystone Discovery Center is very much focused on the commercial and retail opportunities in Greystone. So obviously, being a mixed-use community, we have the residential show homes that are taking care of the residential. The Discovery Center is focused solely on, you know, integrating and incorporating welcoming groups that are interested in investing on the retail or corporate or retail and commercial side of things. It won't be manned twenty-four hours. It's going to have a padlock on it that only I know the code to. Just kidding. And yeah, we're, we're pretty excited to bring that, bring bring that to life. So it's, we're expecting to start construction on that by the middle of June, so just about a month from now. And with the goal of having it open and available by appointment only the end of July. So just to, I guess, the the right is a good example of kind of a master-planned approach to to development. And I give a lot of credit to Mark, I forget his last name. Thank you. Mark Spence with Town, Drew, and a number of other staff working with Akro, who is under contract for these two lots, Burns West, myself, to really try and shape, it's a little bit confusing because it's actually not the north area, which should actually be the other way. But this is the two lots on the east side of the High Street. The pond, not the lake, but the pond, kind of wraps around it. And then, of course, the urban plaza is down at the very bottom right corner of of that. So Akro was in a lot of work prepping plans for this. I'm actually genuinely really excited about it. I think it's, it's, it's designed in a really cool way, incorporated the vast majority of the Town's comments, which were really good. And we're looking forward to getting this thing, obviously, in, vetting all of the comments, getting everything taken care of and ultimately getting approved in as quickly a time as possible so we can get these final lease agreements in place and and get rolling on on this commercial component. I think it's going to be a huge component to the vibrancy of Greystone. And yeah, we'll, we'll leave it at that, but that's also coming. So my, my hope would be that this site, which is likely going to be consolidated, we'll see, will be breaking ground at some point here next summer. Another component on the uniquely Greystone work is co-op. So here's a couple of renderings. Appreciate it might be a little hard to see, but this is their latest design that they were able to share with us as of this morning. It's coming in for their official GP, I believe it's next week. But yeah, co-op and their brand really kind of says it all. But obviously, with the with the roundabout that's going to connect the rec center to 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 co-op being completed here over the next couple of months, co-op going in, I believe they'll probably try and break ground here later this year, obviously depending on on how long the the approvals process takes. But they're certainly committed to to getting the entire site built out as as soon as as soon as they can. So I was a little, a little concerned a few years ago with this site and in conversations with them. It's been a lot of, a lot of conversations that they were going to phase in their development and particularly not have the the grocery store come on until their final phase. But happy to hear not only are they doing it all at once, but the grocery store is quite a bit larger than I was anticipating. Previous conversations were more of a boutique, I don't know, maybe not boutique, but a smaller scale format grocery store, and this is certainly not that. So pleased with where things are at from a co-op perspective. Play, live, work, play. Final piece, so last few pages are really just kind of some renderings of what we're planning to do here. This is the urban plaza. This is looking, basically, we're sitting on top of the Future Hotel and looking east over over the pond. Obviously, the buildings that are on north and south side of it are just kind of block shell format for now. But this is the urban plaza. We're actually going to be calling it Jefferson Plaza in honor of the late Jeff Burns. We'll also be having a commemorative area in plaque in his honor as well. So we're really excited to 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 bring that to life. Here's another kind of example of what that'll look like, can look like. It's obviously summertime, having some tents there and and kind of just, you know, wanting to highlight the 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 possibility with with the space in there. Okay, ten acre, ten acre site. You see the Future Hotel site in the background. Lots going on. Lots going on here. We are, we have our drawings in, landscape drawings in for approval with with Town. We anticipate breaking ground on this ten acre piece this summer. It'll likely be July, August, probably more closer to August, but we're going to focus on the west two-thirds, which is the ball diamonds first. So the ball diamonds are full baseball-sized diamonds, it's three oh five or three hundred and ten feet, I forget the exact amount, but I guess it's something that's hard, hard to have, and there isn't a lot of in Cochrane, if any at all, so we're excited about that. You can't really see. But can I do this? So, so, oh yeah, so right there, kind of cool, it's like a baseball that we're just kind of adding, just to kind of add some flavor. And yeah, we're we're thrilled, we anticipate there being tournaments, etc. here. Hopefully people don't hit the ball too far because it'll be going off into the campground. Just kidding, sort of. And yeah, so we anticipate that we'll get through the development and construction of the ball diamonds certainly by the end of the year. Want to make sure we get the the ground and and the grass and stuff fully set in for for next spring. Heading over to the east side. So lots happening here. Appreciate pickleball courts or or perhaps having some conversations in the papers, but we have twenty proposed pickleball courts. Twenty is the number that is required to qualify for national tournaments. And we are in the process of applying for a grant of up to a million dollars in matching funds from the province for this. The president of the Cochrane Pickleball Association has been fantastic, Joanne. Lots of energy and certainly keeping keeping myself on my toes and and we're really thrilled to have her in our corner as we finalize this submission in the next two weeks. So we also have an outdoor basketball court. It's a bit recessed, so it can be flooded in the winter, or it can be turned into an ice rink in in the winter. I'm a big fan of basketball, hence why we're going to have that in here, by the way. And also children's playground, just on the other side. There is a washroom facility here. It's amazing the cost of these things, but we're just in the early stages of designing the washroom. Obviously, with all the activities going to be happening out there, we need to make sure we we design that one appropriately. There is also a parking lot, which certainly Greystone is going to be busy, the the rec center is busy. It was necessary for us to accommodate parking on the site itself. So, yeah, and actually, the the renderings of the buildings just to the right across the street are actual renderings of of the the approved Akro building, so it's actually pretty accurate. Okay, Fast and Furious. On the on the bottom here, community grand opening Saturday, September the twenty-third, it's locked in. We will be sending out obviously invitations to to all of you here as that as that date gets closer. It's going to be a very mature grand opening, and there might even have some residents living there at that point, but we're we're certainly excited for it. And hoping for a nice warm fall, fall day. With that, any questions?
All right. Counselor Nagel?
Very nice to see the recreation stuff you guys are building. Thank you very much. You mentioned grants here. Is everything here getting built regardless of the outcome of the grant application, or is it contingent on the grant?
Just a tough question out of the gate. Oh, I'm just kidding. So on the grant application, the the submission deadline is either June the first or the fifteenth, we'll make sure we hit that. But the actual announcement doesn't come out until the beginning of December sometimes, so. We have caveated in the event that we are unsuccessful. We may be coming back in over the winter months on the east side to look at a slight revision to this. I don't, I don't think it's feasible that we would proceed with twenty full pickleball courts without any sort of funding.
So would would the whole thing be reimagined without the grant, or just the pickleball court size would be reduced?
Yep, just the pickleball area, we'd be looking at that, perhaps integrating some more open space, because there isn't a lot, if you look, it's pretty busy space. So my my guess would be we would probably drop it down, probably incorporate a tennis court as well or two, and then have some more open space as part of the the offset there, yeah.
Excellent. Well, I'm very, very much looking forward to seeing this part built. Thanks. That's great.
Counselor McFadden?
Yeah, it's a it's a night of wow presentations. So, yeah, I'm very excited about this and as a nearby resident, I swear every time I I head out in the street, you've got a new house up. So that's great. But in your presentation, what I was really appreciative of seeing was the diversity of housing that you're bringing in and and providing solutions for rental and for seniors living and affordable. And also mixing that in with, you know, a very appealing place to live. There seems to be something for every everyone in this. Which I'm really grateful to see because that's what I feel is we are missing some diversity in the Cochrane housing mix, so I'm really glad to see that. And as Counselor Nagel said, the recreation piece, excited to see. I think somebody reached out to me recently and they're like, Tara, you've been working on recreation. What are you doing? So I'll point to this. I won't take credit for it, but I'll point to it. But yeah, so it's it's really great to be able to see some of this recreation pieces coming on. The other piece that I'm really glad to see is, and you mentioned it, I think the the pathway, the trail connectivity, the east-west is going to be happening by spring of next year.
Like the road going through Greystone, it'll all be done by the end of this year.
By the end of this year.
Yep, this fall.
So, because I'm just, with that conflict we have with the Jim Offman Park, some people want to be able to cycle not through a off-leash space. So my hope and expectation always in your development was going to help solve that and providing a place safe way for people to kind of get through that part of our town. So really excited to see that piece coming on. And then, you know, in the shopping at Co-op, I get that question all the time. So, yeah, I'm really, really excited about this. This may be the only presentation where the developer showed up and said, this is really cool. Nobody else ever says that, so I'm glad you think your development's cool. I also think it's cool. So and then just some some feedback and some questions. Like I said, I'm a nearby resident, and so I get some questions from my neighbors and some concerns. So with the work was, you know, kind of the the dust mitigation and keeping the street on river clean. I've had two comments on that. And I said, we're doing the best they can, but here's me passing that on.
Yep, no, great, great question, and I hear it a lot, too. I'm blow, I think I've blown through my my erosion and sediment control and my dust mitigation budgets, but we are we are sweeping River Avenue every day. It's obviously been a bit of a muddy muddy season. It's a lot of activity. We're certainly doing the best that we can and yeah, I was actually just out there just a couple of hours ago. Appreciate the patience of residents and we're very proactive, any calls, bylaw, etc., we're out there doing what we can right away, so. Yeah, part of growth is a little bit of the the pain and some dust that comes with it, but we're hopeful, especially as those those homes that that front onto River Avenue are completed and constructed and landscaping down in there, that that'll start to help to be a bit of a block from a lot of what you're seeing there. But, yeah, good, good question.
And then the other piece, so river is such an important and and becoming more of important as kind of a gateway access to to your community, to River View, to the golf course, to the TransCanada Trail and the off-leash piece, so it's, you know, it needs to be beautiful. So and, you know, with the replacement of the power lines that have gone in there, and I was reassured here those are temporary. And that they're going underground shortly. But and you also indicated that so you're going to have the regional trail kind of go from the top of the gas station in the north all the way down to the Jim Offman parking lot, and that's going to go in this season as well?
The pathway?
Yeah.
So we're, so Greystone will only be constructing this year, the phase two boundary of the regional pathway.
Okay.
So kind of the northern yellow piece, if you will, of phase two, all the way down to our southern property line. On top of that, we are extending this summer, the pathway down to the TransCanada Trail. Like I said, also happening over here this summer. So by the end of the year, a connection through Greystone and the two connections down to TransCanada Trail.
Yeah, so that's great news. And then and and some, one of the opportunities I'd like is to see if we can explore in partnership, because I know it's not on Greystone to to solve all of my hopes and dreams for you. Is to make sure that we don't have a gap in service where the the Spray Lake property is. Because those power lines are up there and the trail, and I understand the plan is always that that would change as redevelopment would happen. But I think it would be a missed opportunity to not to take advantage of kind of the work that's being done there now. So if there's a possibility for administrative, for us as the town to work with you guys, to see if we can partner with Spray and and make sure that that trail, you know, gets completed and the utilities go underground as quickly as possible, so I just wanted to put that out publicly as well. I think it'll serve everybody's best interest for that to be done as quickly as possible. And my final thing. Anyway, I'm super excited about it because I remember for years and years, it was just a gravel pit that
A dusty one.
A very dusty gravel pit that nobody that nobody cared about. And then one day, you folks showed up and said, hey, we're going to do something, and it's been flying busy ever since, so. Not only are you providing some really great diversity of housing and some great recreation and connectivity, as you highlighted, it's like half a billion dollars in assessment there to help bring some tax dollars into our community and balance off our expenses. It's a big win. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Fred Eko?
Thank you for doing this presentation. I think you're partially here because of a request that I had. I think it's it's fabulous for the public to be able to see this come together. There's been so many different changes or things that we've decided in the background, but the public really has no idea how it all kind of comes together and what it looks like in in that build form, so. So thank you for that. I'm especially thankful that you you have pushed, we've pushed on recreation and getting that to be a priority for us. That's that's a huge win. We've heard countless times that we're so falling far behind, and this is just such a great thing to be able to go out to the community and say, hey, for our ball lover, ball lovers out there that, you know, next year, we're going to be able to add some some fields for you. I think it's it's a massive win. I actually really don't have too many questions for you, I just, I had a couple. Is there any idea in a future plan about stacked bungalows or a bungalow type of idea? I I understand that when we're building bungalows, it takes up a lot of land, so it's not necessarily a builder's top choice of what they want to put out in the market, but it is something that I can honestly say that I know lots of people are looking for an option. They're not ready for apartment living. They don't want to walk up four flights of stairs all the time in a townhome, so do you have any plans for that, or do you know of any?
Like as far as traditional bungalows go?
Could be stacked, could be traditional, anything that offers just a variety in one floor living.
Yep, so the traditional bungalows we have, there's actually one. I'm not sure if somebody's ready to move in or not, but yeah, we have one that's like fully built. Typically, bungalows will go in corner lots where they're a bit wider. So yes, our our builders are offering the traditional bungalow format, and sorry, before I forget completely unrelated, I forgot to highlight it on here, but it's a big one, the twenty of Griffin Road. So as per our development agreement that I'm waiting to get signed. Burns West, through our previous commitment, is is paying for the the vast majority of the costs related to designing, constructing the twenty of of Griffin Road from the southern round, southern roundabout that's there up to the turnoff to go up into the half-hitch, basically, I think is is where it's at. So so, yeah, that that will be happening, my guess, not my guess. I I think quite realistically, that'll be starting in twenty twenty-six, and I say that just because we have an agreement that upon approval of the third DP for phase four, which is a four-lot thing, we need to be in the design and getting started on the construction of that twenty. So it was kind of a traffic trip generated thing, but yeah, so that's a, sorry, that's a that's a big, that's a big offsite upgrade, our big offsite upgrade upgrade that I should have mentioned in the presentation. Back to bungalows. Yeah, sorry, that's the only, my only feedback I got for you, bungalows.
Yeah, it's just, it's just something that's, it's something that's important that I would love to see us be able to incorporate in some way, maybe it's not the traditional bungalow design, but something just to be able to offer more choice here. Because there there isn't a huge amount of choice in that in that housing variety. And the other thing that I can't really tell based on the phasing, but when it comes to pathways that cut through to the parks, I I'm really hoping that there's a very great design that all connects people from a lot of different areas, because I can say that there are many places in Cochrane where, you know, we've built, you know, courts or things like that where it loops around, but then there's no access to the main park, so people have to go all the way from the top, walk all the way around. It just seems sometimes short-sighted that we don't actually plan those things out to figure out how that access looks, so I don't know if you could comment about that.
Yeah, we definitely do. One of Greystone's features is we kind of connect people in places. So kind of obviously all throughout it, starting with the Urban Plaza and the 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 full regional pathway all around the pond. Through to here, I don't know if you can really see it, but we do have where the baseball logo is connecting all the way down through to a gate down here. And then, of course, once you get over into here, we do have access pathways, concrete sidewalks, connecting all the different spaces together. The other smaller parks certainly have that as well, connecting from sidewalks to to pathways to the play structures and and on through, so. Yeah, we definitely have that.
Excellent. Well, I'm excited to see it all come together. Yeah, just thank you again for really pushing on some of those points, because I know that that's sometimes not always an easy thing to want to do recreation first, but I think it is an important message that we're trying to send to the community that this is going to be this council's only community that we've really approved, and so we want to, we want to make sure that we're upping what everybody's going to see out there. So thank you.
Counselor Wilson?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Josh. I started with the five questions, I'm down to one, and then you buried the lead with the expansion of Griffin Road, that's pretty cool. Just wondering how far north that's going to go? It's from the traffic circle by the Spray Lakes and then how how far north up Griffin Road is that?
I think it probably actually extends to our our property boundary up there.
Interesting.
But, yeah. I think I think it's like that's
Yeah, okay. It does. We completed that agreement in two thousand and fifteen. If this is how far this development goes back, so one of the first things with Mr. Burns that we negotiated when I first started at the town was the expansion of Griffin Road down to the arena. So this was the secondary part of it as the development came forward, that when they hit a specific threshold, they'll be responsible for upgrading that road.
Excellent. And then my one question left is rental products, that's something new to me. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about size and scope. You'd mentioned the two, the two builders, Avalon and Aquero, I think?
Akro.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just wondering how size, scope, and then what that means for the Cochrane rental market. It's something unique, I understand, we don't have that.
Yeah, so I can't speak to Avalon yet. I do know a lot of the, so they they build in a lot of Brookfield communities, so down in Seton, for example, in Calgary, they have a lot of, a lot of the stacked townhouse rental options. I think it's a pretty similar floor layout, etc. to Akro. Sorry, just give me a second, apparently can't do two things at once. Okay, so over on the right-hand side, you're going to see the Akro unit. So effectively what they are is you get as small as just under five hundred square feet down in kind of the the lower main, if you will, kind of semi-basement. Which, of course, would be your most affordable from a rental perspective, then on to kind of a two-story two-bedroom piece, two as large as a three-bedroom, including a walkout terrace, is how it's been described. I don't know a whole lot beyond that. Certainly Akro's got a bunch on their website. But they can give you floor plans, layouts, that sort of thing. This one that I just described to you is is a is a for-sale product, but my understanding with the rental that they're going to be doing to the north, it's going to be a similar design, but certainly just for clarity, this is a, this is our for-sale solution right across the street from the park.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Thanks for that clarity. Very interesting, and thank you for the presentation.
Okay, seeing the other questions, I had a couple of my own. So most of the questions I at least receive as a counselor is, we've heard about Greystone for a while, one is they're going to be built and what's happening down there, and so I think you've done an excellent job in term, Mr. Hagan, in presenting that information and giving us an update. Particularly, what I appreciated in your presentation was the, as Counselor McFadden talked about, the the values associated with this in relation to assessment. I think that's really important that council understands that as well as our community. But also, you know, the updates in terms of recreation pathways and timelines, I think all have been, have been really helpful in terms of your presentation tonight. The one question that I'm surprised that other council members hadn't asked and 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 I dare ask, but is there any, is there a dog park in any of this development?
No, there is not. No, there's not.
So
Short, sweet.
I'm just putting it out there that that at least sixty to seventy percent of our community, and and I don't know that it, Greystone will be any different, have a dog, and so just just thought that you might want to consider. But having said that, on behalf of council, thank you for your presentation. Particularly for taking the time and and visiting with us, and we look to afford a future opportunity being able to do so, so thank you on behalf of council. Uh, particularly for taking the time and uh and visiting with us, and we look to afford a future opportunity being able to do so. So thank you on behalf of council.
Thank you very much and appreciate uh the the platform and connecting with you all again. Thank you.
Okay, we will excuse Counsel Wilson and I'll catch up with you later. And invite uh Mr. Hamm to the podium to talk about Colt Direction.
Quickly, a couple of housekeeping pieces before Counsel Wilson leaves. I just wanted to extend a huge thank you to council for supporting Bike Cochrane and uh and the the budgetary ask that we had last year to to continue to support them. The uh, the budget that we put aside for Bike Cochrane this year went straight towards the McElhenney um investigation of the River Song River area area. So just something to take away for uh for council that uh that was your doing and that professional display of Paul Perot was all on behalf of council. Also, uh, Yuchin Tang was going to hopefully be here tonight, but he was unable to attend. Counsel McFadden, do you want to go before?
I just wanted to give you ten points for the fastest report to council on a question ever. So well done. Cause we we asked the question in the previous.
Good evening. So this report follows up on the council report on March twentieth, twenty twenty three, addressing several key questions raised about transit in Cochrane and provides several recommendations and proposed operational changes. This report identifies that that while challenges exist, improvements are equally possible. The report further emphasizes why transit should be considered a community wellness investment with goals differing from other traditional services where cost neutrality and revenue generation primarily guide decision making. Um, accommodating demand remains a significant challenge for Colt. However, for the ridership Colt has has been able to serve, the system has been cost effective amongst peer systems, improving system efficiency and skit and scale to supply, demand remain top priorities while also managing associated costs. On demand transit was chosen for its flexibility to scale up or down, and several operational changes will be identified to provide additional system stability and improve the quality of service, complete with financial implications. So what we heard uh on March twentieth is, does transit have a place in Cochrane? And what was asked was, is Colt cost effective? Does Colt have low ridership? And why on demand transit and its alternatives are are optimal or not optimal for Cochrane? Followed by, we'll bring some recommendations and operational changes for us to consider um throughout the presentation. Starting from the top, the strategic plan for twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five speaks to um committing to preserving our unique identity. Uh, it's a, is, Cochrane is a complete community, providing everything required for residents, visitors, and businesses alike to live, work, and thrive. And Cochrane is a home to a flourishing business community with a di- dynamic downtown core and vibrant shops and restaurants. And we commit to bringing people together physically and socially, walking, biking, scootering, transit. We support connection. We we're highlighting identity, vibrant economy, livability, and connectivity out of the strategic plan as a focus on this report. But one could make the case for open spaces in naturalized areas because of reduced greenhouse gas emissions that occur for tran- with transit use also creates for a very vibrant, natural uh area in our in our community. Moving on to the sustainability plan from two thousand and nine, some of the highlights that we took away from there, uh such as residents don't need to use automobiles as frequently as they did in the past, thanks to transportation options now available. And by twenty twenty nine, there is a complete interconnected mode and corridor network throughout Cochrane and the region that is accessible to a full range of vehicular and non vehicular use and users. And then from the Connecting Cochrane Plan, the Transportation Master Plan from twenty seventeen, the vision of that document is Cochrane is served by a multimodal transportation system that supports economic viability and environmental, social, and financial sustainability. These are our guiding visions. These are the things that we follow to to guide our decisions and the things that we use to ma- to help make our decisions throughout. Our shared conclusions, transit is vital. It's a vital component of Cochrane's transformation to a city. Um, it is, it is mu- it's multi modes, including buses, bikes, scooters, cars, trucks, walking, and must be accessible to all. And three, transit is a key component to the four weather access to our community. So what is Cochrane? Cochrane is a, based on the visions that we took from these documents, Cochrane is a place where students and youths can independently travel to school and activities. Uh, twenty five percent of Cochraneites are under nineteen years old. Uh, seniors have choices to be more self sufficient and age in place. Seniors over sixty five represent sixteen percent of our community and one third of the seniors above uh from age eighty to eighty four do not drive. Um, it also speaks to access to opportunities given, given for those who are, do not drive or do not have a car, and also promotes walking as exercise. Forty one to forty eight percent of Cochrane residents commute to work in Cochrane. That's part of the twenty seventeen uh Transportation Master Plan or the Connecting Cochrane Plan, as well as the twenty twenty one census by population. So what are the benefits of transit? Um, when we asked the Transit Tax Task Force, transit is a social good. It's an economic driver. It's the conveyor belt in the factory. It doesn't make money. It is part of the system. Provides access to jobs, opportunities for those without auto access. It increases living affordability. It increases foot traffic to businesses. It helps promote physical activity, and it reduces congestion and accidents. And then above all, it reduces air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions. In twenty nineteen, on demand transit was implemented in Cochrane. On demand was chosen because of uncertainty of ridership and and uncertainty of what the implementation would look like in twenty nineteen into our community. It was for the coverage. We wanted to cover the entire community. We didn't want to be selective. We wanted to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to ride transit. We chose it for our flexibility. We could scale up to a fixed route system, or we could scale down to fewer buses if required. And that was demonstrated during COVID. We were able to respond accordingly to the challenges of COVID and the challenges that our our community met. And even furthermore, we were so efficient at that, that we received a meager grant from from Alberta Transportation for our our overage uh or our loss in revenue in our in our transit system of less than twenty thousand dollars because we were so responsive that we made such a minor financial impact. Some of the competing plans in twenty nineteen were a fixed route service all day, all locations for one point five million dollars, a fixed route service all day corridors only for five hundred and sixty four thousand dollars, and a fixed route service during rush hour for all locations for five hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. So we know the theoretical benefits, but what are the practical impacts? In twenty twenty two, we we reached forty eight thousand trips, um, which was a a major jump for us because our our previous years were were riddled with COVID and uncertainty. In twenty twenty three, with the addition of twenty one point seven five hours contributed by the on it service and the on it agreement that was made in uh August of twenty twenty two, um, we are seeing a projected expectation of sixty thousand to seventy thousand rides in twenty twenty three. Um, the monthly passengers for twenty twenty two was four thousand and nineteen, and we are already seeing that that is a is a major increase with the increased hour per, hours per day. The average weekday passengers has also increased, and the number of shared rides has also increased with the efficiencies that we've worked through with the, with our app system, with RideCo. Um, the passengers per vehicle hours continues to increase, and the occupied time also continues to increase. And this means growing numbers of transit trips. This means that uh through our March twenty twenty three analysis, we show a fifteen to twenty five percent trips unmet. People want to be on the bus. They can't get on it. Transit ridership per capita is low, suggesting unobserved latent demand given population. I also think that our geography and our topography is a is a huge factor with that. We don't have a grid system of roads, which means that buses that are trying to make adjustments and and last minute adjustments to accommodate extra riders have challenges to meet that need because we don't have a grids type system. And so we are, we are optimizing as much as we possibly can, but there are challenges. And then the existing ridership has been, has continued to be um served at a reasonable cost. So short conclu- short conclusion, ridership potential is not being reached right now. Cochrane residents desire more service. Uh, we can see that by the latent demand, by the, by the missed opportunities. We look at it in perspective of if someone misses their morning trip, that means they will not be taking an afternoon trip. We see it as someone who has challenges with with getting on a bus, that they potentially will not use that bus for another trip or another opportunity. So we're looking to increase efficiency and increase riders without proportional increase in cost. And we're also looking to scale up. We're looking to get, we're also looking to add hours or add opportunity. And then we, and then our other focus, our our other short conclusion is transit can continue to be delivered cost effectively as expected. Placing Colt challenges in context, ridership recovery to pre-COVID in late twenty twenty two, we we saw a stark jump in our ridership when we added a twenty one point two five hours or twenty one point seven five hours per day to our, to our service in January. A driver shortage was addressed uh in December of twenty twenty two, which we were, we were met with that challenge for over five months. And uh vehicle hours were increased in January twenty twenty three as a part of the on it agreement. Um, and then the fixed route study was paused during the pandemic, and so we we still need to attain more information, although we have a lot of data associated with our on demand. So stability in twenty twenty three will allow ridership to to catch up to service expansion, focus on adjustments to increase service efficiency and productivity. So is Colt cost effective? Well, we took some of our objective measurable quantitative information confirmed and supported by the Canadian Urban Transit Association, which is QTA. They are the leading edge in uh in transit information, and they work with all of the of the organizations and municipalities that that we work with and that we collab- collaborate with. Their information is very thorough, and it is, it is worth working with them because it gives us quantifiable, quantifiable data that is measurable against other communities. So is, can transit be cost neutral or revenue generating? No, it's not. It it's it's not feasible. It would be thirty passengers, all hours of the day, all locations of Cochrane. That that's not a feasible expectation. But there are benefits to transit. They're a social good, they're an economic driver, and are achieved through a scale of ridership, optimal hours, optimal coverage. And there is currently not an example of a net zero transit service in Canada. So to answer the Colt cost effective question, we look at our comparatives. And so the first one being that, we use the twenty nineteen data because there is no released twenty twenty two data from our comparative communities, and we use our own twenty twenty two data because that was our up um, our up curve from the, our COVID response. And so this is the best that we could do in terms of taking um measurable data that would, that was not impacted by COVID. So you can see that the the communities that we've used in terms of um their comparisons are like communities, similar friendly, oh, sorry. Um, here it is. Cities were chosen from the list of comparative comparator cities in twenty eighteen Transit Task Force Report. Similar populations are used, assuming travel demand generated is similar. Alberta cities have been favored, and we've tried to control for travel behavior by choosing comparators that have adjacency to major city without significant educational, cultural, touri- or tourist attractions, which can drive up transit use. The dates, twenty twenty two Colt has been, as as the system showed recovery from pandemic, QTA has not released twenty two, twenty twenty two data from the other municipalities at that time, and twenty twenty one would not have been a fair comparison. So if you look down the chart here, the the comparison service area population, you'll see that there are some some easily, easy comparisons, and then we've chosen a few that are are um ones that the Transit Task Force had chosen. And then the linked passenger trips, we had forty eight thousand in twenty twenty two, and by comparison, there was largely more uh passenger trips in the other municipalities that we are, we're comparing to. The revenue vehicle hours is the number of vehicle hours that are operating uh with passengers on onboard, and then the total passenger trips per capita. You can see that we're low on the total passenger trips per capita at one point three nine in comparison, but all of the other systems that we're comparing to are fixed route. Um, and then the passengers per vehicle hour, we are seeing five point five. As I said, the the other comparisons are fixed route, and I considering we we're at five point five, I still think that we uh we show up very well in comparison to a fixed route system. And then the total, total cost per revenue vehicle hour is uh, ours is sixty nine dollars and fifty seven cents, uh total cost per revenue vehicle hour in comparison to the others, which we are significantly lower cost per vehicle hour. The average fare is also lower um in Cochrane, which is uh, which was raised at the Transit Task Force as in, as an opportunity to draw people to the transit service. So our total operating revenue is a hundred and three thousand, and by comparison, that is very small. And then the total direct, direct operating expense is six hundred and ten thousand. Again, by comparison is is quite a bit less. So apples to apples, total direct cost per passenger. What does it cost to operate per passenger? Twelve sixty six is our, is our total direct cost per passenger, and then the total, or the net direct cost per passenger, which is uh taking um average fare into consideration, is ten fifteen. As you'll see across the board, there are a couple outliers um with Erdri and Prince Albert. Prince Albert has a very traditional fixed route system on a grid pattern that has very few hills. Um, Erdri, I would say, has uh similarly, does not have um the topographical challenges, although they do have Highway Two in the middle of it, so that can can provide some challenges, but they are a very efficient service and a very great team over there. And then Laduke, Spruce Grove, and Grand Prairie um show up in a, from a cost effectiveness similar to Cochrane. We are very average in the, in the cost effectiveness standpoint. Um, to follow up, QTA hasn't captured this as the net direct operating cost um and capital expenditure, but it was a question that was uh posed by council, and so we chose to put it in, even though we didn't have comparative comparative data. And I would say that we are still substantially less than the majority because our buses are are inexpensive to replace, but that number is uh from a expected number is thirteen dollars and fifty four cents per per trip. And um with a more conservative um estimation is thirteen seventy per trip. So still less than fifteen dollars per trip as per the question. Um. This is just a chart of how we uh measured the depreciation. This was uh supported by QTA. And it, the implication is simply this, the lifecycle planning for Colt is needed, and it, and the Colt buses' end of life identified are in twenty twenty seven. With the wear and tear reduction through COVID, we think that would be extended, but we are using a more conservative approach. So is Colt cost effective? Colt is average by comparison. There's ample opportunity for improvement. Does Colt have low ridership? I got a booklet. Uh, so Colt ridership is a total and per capita, um, total and per capita is the lowest of the systems compared. Uh, however, buses are not idle. Eighty two percent are occupied in twenty twenty three, and ridership occurs at all hours of the day. We know we have latent demand, uh observed and unobserved. So observed latent demand is when we can see missed trips or people failed searches on the, on our app system, and we calculate those. Unobserved is when we have an anticipated uh failed search where someone in the morning would miss a, or wouldn't get a trip, and they would choose to take a different mode of transportation in the afternoon as well. And so we can only use the the observed metric, but we we base our estimations sometime, or we base some of our up estimations off of of the unobserved based on some metrics that we are aware of. So Colt, Colt does struggle to meet current demand, and increased demand cannot be met with current service level efficiencies. So what that means is that we can't just continue to tweak the app system to make more people get on buses. We have cha- challenges that other communities aren't, don't experience necessarily. Um, Colt ridership occurs all hours of the day. Buses are not idle. Occupation time or occupied time is eighty two percent. Uh, during the, these are the hours of the day at the bottom, and and then the passenger, passenger rides completed. So at our five thirty to uh six AM um times, we have very low ridership because we're just getting started. And then you see that starkly increase at six AM all the way through to ten AM in the morning. We see a small lull throughout the middle of the day, and then we see peak again at at three o'clock in the afternoon throughout the, until the end of the day. This is very consistent, and this is very consistent information that we have people using transit in our community all day, every day. So once Colt struggles with demand, users turn to other, other modes. More demand than can be handled. So we have fifteen to twenty five percent of additional trips unmet. March, that's our March twenty twenty three failed search analysis. And uh under the assumption that there are people out there that have, have had their needs unmet frequently and probably have not returned to the app. So that's just on the basis of one month's information that fifteen to twenty five percent of people are not having their needs met. Buses are, buses are deemed difficult to. Buses are, buses are deemed difficult to book, which is, we'll get to that in a second here. But the, the challenge with this is that we, an on-demand service is not necessarily the best title for what we're offering. It's demand responsive. We're, we're giving people the opportunity to ask for their bus. But on-demand gives the implication that it would be there available to you at a moment's notice. And that, that is a challenging circumstance because we're not, that's not the intention of the service. The intention of the service is to be extremely efficient and for multiple trips to be booked throughout a possible day where there can be, where a bus can meander off its course to pick someone up and get back on that course and, and optimize that trip for multiple users. And there's a desire for expanded hours. Trips outside the service hours can mean no, can mean to and from trips or foregone on transit. So someone that works a late shift, they may not be able to get a ride home or someone that wants to go out for dinner and have a couple of drinks may choose a different option. And so it's something that we, that we need to consider in terms of how we move to the next phase. So how can Colt, how can Colt accommodate more demand? Efficiency increases, uh, increased passengers per vehicle hour without proportional increase in vehicle hours. So we can do a study on fixed route and on-demand hybrid systems. We can, we can be optimizing our stops, uh, and then we can have an app and parameter adjustments. So the study is more to look at the opportunities for where can we seek to improve? How can, we can seek help from consultation in this space. Fixed route systems in this, in this country have been very successful. On-demand systems are barely, fairly new and, and our on-demand system is, is not without the challenges over the last three years. We can also optimize stops. In Cochrane, we have a hundred and forty-nine stops. We have, we have the, our focus has been keeping people walking the minimal distance to get to their stops. And perhaps we can, we can flex on that to try and optimize our system. And then the app and program parameter adjustments such as school service cancellations and wait times for, for drivers and for passengers. Those are things that we can constantly tweak on the backend, but the impacts of those adjustments take time to understand. We can't just say that, you know, buses are no longer going to wait for passengers for a full minute and we're going to dial that back to five seconds without understanding how much of an impact that's going to have on the user qualitative experience. So we want to be mindful of the decisions we make in our app, with our app and with our backend to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our community. And then the section, second option is scale increases. So in 2022 Colt revenue vehicle hours is the lowest of systems compared. And then the addition of the twenty-one point seven to seven-five weekday vehicle hours added in January 2023 showed us just instantly meeting that need. There was no advertising, we did not market it, we just looked for an opportunity to coordinate with our partner. And they, they chose to increase those hours for, for January and we saw an, an instant increase by ridership in our community, which means that it's, the people are there and they're waiting to use the system. We can, efficiency can be improved by shifting distribution right on this graph. And so the idea is to continuously add more people per vehicle hour. So the current, current trips generally shared by few riders with few high occupancy rides. We see that in terms of, uh, according to this table, we, we can see that per hour we see the majority of our, our buses have four to five passengers or the average is four point eight per, uh, passengers for, per vehicle hour. But you can see that four point, uh, eight passengers per vehicle hour is, it can, it can sense to be, or it can be improved. So does, does Colt have low ridership? Based on the current service level, Colt, Colt is oversubscribed. Colt can increase efficiency and scale to serve more demand, but it does not have low ridership. Is Uber a better alternative? Innisville, Innisville, Ontario, with a population of forty-three thousand people in 2021, remains the sole prominent example of Uber as transit. Fares are subsidized with fixed rates to key destinations and up to five dollar subsidy on all, on, to all other locations. Since implementation in 2017, ridership was highly successful, increasing from five thousand in December 2017 to eighty-five hundred per month in early 2019 and peaked at ten thousand, ten thousand per month. As a consequence, subsidy costs increased from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in 2017 to eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in 2019. To control spending in April 2019, Innisville limited subsidized rides to fifteen trips per month, with some expectations in, and increased fares to four to six dollars for key locations while decreasing the subsidy cap to four dollars. Riders depending on transit would thus end up, uh, use up reduced fares midway through the month. So those requiring those subsidizations would have potentially ran those out in a week. Our takeaway, Uber does not scale in productivity. Ridership and cost increase linearly. Majority of rides are single occupancy vehicles. Only thirty-three percent of rides are shared. Uber is not necessarily recommended due to the poor financial sustainability, decreased fare affordability and lack of wheelchair access, does not contribute to decongestion. There's four thousand Uber drivers registered in Innisville. Does not contribute, does not contribute to air emissions reduction or greenhouse gas emissions reduction. We've pulled this table for you to look at in terms of how the University of Toronto Transportation Research Institute looks at how demand responsive transit can, can evolve. So from the ride hailing aspect to the ride sharing aspect into our type of system, the on-demand system through to fixed route. And if you use the bottom bars as an example, the service goals of the ride hailing system is more individualized and personal, whereas the service goals of a fixed route system are collectively and shared. And you can see how that would be a sliding scale. And same with vehicle size, you would, you would be looking at a much larger, larger bus systems as well as the productivity, you can, you can take as, as many passengers as that you can afford to fit in your buses. So is Uber a better alternative? There are many qualitative and quantitative factors to a conventional transit system that would not be met by an Uber system in Cochrane. So next steps. So in this next step here, we're going to try and make some short-term midterm recommendations to council to consider. There are many levers to pull in this, in this opportunity and there are many opportunities for us to take in more information while we're trying to figure out what our next steps are. We can, we can establish a demand in our evenings, we can establish a demand in our mornings, we can establish demand in our weekends and, and holidays. We can have, we can gain more information and guide us further to make decisions. But we can't make, we can't gather more information without pulling some of these levers and understanding that these ripple effects will be, will take time to understand and take time for them to take, to, to make their impacts. So we're going to do our best to make short-term recommendations for, for today and tomorrow and next year. So our first short-term recommendation is, is to, uh, reinstate the study of the fixed route or on-demand hybrid type system. The on-demand will remain in part due to Cochrane geography and community layout and the benefit increased spontaneity of travel for and accommodate more demand with the fixed system. The consultation support in 2023 to design fixed route hybrid routing for consideration of implementation in 2024 would be sixty thousand dollars. And that was just a, a very rough estimate we got from a consultant that we have worked on in the past, worked with in the past. And that would be implementing that study in this year to make a recommendation for the 2024 budget. The second recommendation will be optimizing stops. Transit planning advocates for up to five-minute walking distance based on a four-hundred-meter walking distance. We understand that there are, we, we have taken into consideration that there are people in our community that require, um, shorter stop distances and there's, there is some flexibility in how we can approach that in terms of qualitative or, yeah, qualitative experience for some of our residents. Current walking dock distances are very short and, and the stop density is very high. We have a hundred and forty-nine stops in our community and that definitely reduces efficiency. It certainly is not a reduction in efficiency quite like a door-to-door service. However, we feel as though that there is an opportunity for us to be, become more efficient with our stops. And then the benefit would be increased bus productivity by allowing less bus meander. Our third short-term recommendation is app and, and program parameter adjustments. There wouldn't be a cost to this, this is a continuation, as I said before, but like I said, the, the pull of the, some of these levers takes time for us to understand. We can't, we can't make a move on day one and expect to know exactly what's happening on day fifteen. We, if we make an adjustment on the backend, the frontend takes time for us to understand. The benefit is increased scheduling availability and productivity and we, and we will be working with some of those options going forward. So, so next are our short-term operational recommendations and these will come with a cost, short-term, midterm. Uh, the first one is increased service level to account for the additional twenty-one point seven five hours per weekday. So this is currently included in the honored agreement and Southland honors this for the time being. However, it is not tenable on their part to work with this. It is, it has big, it has not fed their audit system in the way that they had expected and they have cut a bus from the audit system because they are not seeing the demand for that use, for that regional system yet. My suggestion was to stick with it because we expect that people are just coming onto it slowly, but that is their operation to run and, and their system to run. And so we've allowed them to do that. If we continue to operate these additional twenty-one point seven hours, we'll have six buses operating at peak times on weekdays and can fur, can further optimize the allocation of hours as we see fit throughout. The benefit of this is preserve the projected ridership growth for 2023 and a basis for future growth, our future Colt improvements, for example, fixed road. This also improves the health of our relationship with our operator and continues to, to maintain what's, what that very important relationship. The total budget increase for the remainder of 2023 would be approximately ninety thousand dollars and the total budget increase per year would be approximately three hundred thousand dollars. The second short-term operational adjustment that we are suggesting is a, is having more control over the driver wage increase. In the entire time that, that, uh, Southland has been operating Colt, the drivers have not seen a wage increase, even though there's an inflationary increase that goes around with the operational agreement. We believe that the reasoning behind that is the fuel cost escalating and volatility of fuel costs. And they've been trying to mitigate their, their increased costs by controlling their wage increases. What is happening though is our driver, our drivers are, are seeing other markets that are providing a better pay and they are gaining the experience to potentially move over to those. What the benefit of this would be is promoting retention, consistency of service and reflect the excellent level of care drivers are expected to provide the passengers in Cochrane. The total budget increase would be for, the entire year would be sixty-five thousand dollars. Based on its current, the way we're current, currently operating. The other, uh, short-term operational adjustment that we are suggesting is moving the fuel expenses to an internal budget out of the operational agreement. It passes on, operator passes the fuel costs onto the town and the standard cost per vehicle is reduced. The long-term cost neutrality versus current agreement. So we see it as an opportunity to have much more say in how the agreement operates so that there's not that flexibility in the volatility of fuel to use as a metric. And the benefit reflects the true cost of operations. So you know what you're getting when you're paying them. The other benefit is, oh, no, I already said that. The total budget increase would be nil, um, and then the expected annual fuel cost is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We're just taking it from one space where it's getting paid for and moving internal so that we have much more control over that cost volatility and therefore much more control over the operational agreement. So moving on to medium-term recommendations. These are recommendations that we suggest to be happening late this year, early next year and, and opportunities for us to, uh, make, make meaningful change in the system to see what the next steps would look like. So one of them being drafting an integrated Cochrane Mobility Plan. This goes in alignment with the, uh, the fixed route plan. Integrate transit, active transportation, walking, micro-mobility, regional travel, roads and land use. So this would look like much bigger picture. Update the existing transportation master plan or connecting Cochrane plan. And, and then it would help transform Cochrane into a true multimodal community. And, and I think that the connecting Cochrane plan, uh, had intentions to do that and we're just looking to further that, that information. Second would be increase weekday evenings by two hours. This would be, uh, currently we're from five forty-five AM to eight PM and the proposed would be five forty-five AM to ten PM. The benefit is the prolonged service time in the evenings better matches most businesses in Cochrane, which close between nine and ten PM, including Spray Lake, which closes at nine PM, which is our, uh, our highest stop in the community. The total budget increase would be approximately sixty-five thousand dollars. And this would, this includes the fuel bypass and wage increase. Then we'd be looking to increase Saturdays to full day service in, uh, to complement the, the weekday service. And so the total cost of this would be eighty-four thousand dollars with the wage increase and fuel bypass. Currently, the two buses are from nine AM to three thirty PM and we're suggesting two buses from eight AM to nine thirty PM. The fourth midterm recommendation we're making is beginning to offer service on Sundays and statutory holidays. Currently, there's no service and we would be proposing at two buses from eight AM to six thirty PM. We see six thirty PM on Sundays and holidays as being a, the regular closure time for most businesses in town and that we would not be impacting kind of businesses that would be staying, staying open later or for the most part. The Sunday total budget increase would be sixty-five thousand dollars for the year and the total statutory holiday, uh, increase would be twenty-one thousand dollars for the year. And then budget planning for 2024. So we would be planning to bring back a future report, an evaluation of the service delivery models, fixed route, hybrid, on-demand and financials. Uh, an evaluation of a third party versus in-house operations. Just to get a sense of what it would look like to move the operations of Colt in-house. We're seeing in other communities like, like Ergery where that's been very effective, as you can see by their metrics. They have a very strong team there and their, and their hospitality service is impeccable. The second for the budget planning would be additions, replacements for the bus fleet. So looking at starting to, uh, lifecycle for the expected on-life of our, of our buses in 2027 or 2028. And so looking at, starting to put away that the financial means to, to make those replacements happen or, and additionally add buses if required. So let's walk through this for a second. So the top line, the weekday service, remove the Colt connector. This is just an example, if we remove the twenty-one point seven five hours, we would remain the same. The second one is removing the Colt connector but adding in the wage increase. And that just is giving an indication of, of what that would look like. It would be an increase of, of forty-two thousand dollars. Then we move down to the weekday service, um, with the Colt connector in-house. So that's the additional twenty-one point seven five hours that, that Southland will be, um, removing from the next agreement with them. And that will increase the service, that, that we would consider that a service expansion. And that would be to the tune of three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars minus the expected revenue, which would be about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars based on our understanding of our revenue right now. The extended evenings would be an additional, uh, two hours per day for two buses. So four, four additional hours of drive time and that addition would be forty-nine thousand dollars per year. And then the Saturday service extension would be an additional fourteen hours at seven hours per, per bus. And that would be an additional forty-one thousand dollars per year. You're seeing at the, on the far right of the new budget ask dollars per year is, is just being correlated with the, uh, wage increases as well. And then the new Sunday service would be twenty-one hours. So that'd be ten and a half hours for two buses as well as the statutory holidays. And you'll see that there's eighty-six thousand and twenty-seven thousand. The total request for increases, um, after revenue has been in, been calculated and the wage increase has been calculated is five hundred and three thousand dollars per year. That is, we understand that that is a, a large ask and, and increase for our service that is currently operating at seven hundred thousand dollars per year. The, the idea here is that we would be looking to, uh, gather more information, meet the latent demand that we are seeing and meet the demand of users that we aren't currently capturing. Potentially also increasing the number of users in our community that have a good experience with Colt and increasing the number of people that speak highly of it. In saying all that, these options are the items we have in our control in a, in our short and medium term and the impacts and the ripple effects will continue to establish the understanding of need in our community. Making a continual case for our growing community to support some form of hybrid or, we, we, we will make a continual case for our growing community to support some form of hybrid or fixed route transit. Because at four percent year-over-year growth in our community with an intention to be at eighty-five thousand people in the next twenty-five years, I would like to be in control of our transit system now and not then. Thank you.
Okay, we'll open up for questions. This is going to be an interesting discussion. Counselor Fred Ekel, did you want to start us off?
Sure. Thanks for the really comprehensive report. It is appreciated. You have a ton of detail. One, can we get your presentation that you showed up there? Can we have that email out to council, just the slides? Cause we have all the information here, but it's much easier graphic wise to be able to share that information publicly for what you did. Cause we have all the information here, but it's much easier graphic wise to be able to share that information publicly for what you did.
No problem.
I, I definitely, i- it's a lot to absorb right now. And it's definitely gonna take some time, I think, for me to probably wrap my brain around, uh, everything, suggestions. My, my one concern though is, is that I've tried to access Colt for my children. And I've had probably zero success rate. Um, I can get somewhere, I can never get home. It tells me I can't book for two weeks or booked like. And so for me to throw more money at it, which I understand, like without kind of putting money into some of the short term fixes. I just don't know if they're going to fix any of those issues that other people have, right? So it's like we can, you know, certainly by paying drivers more and by kind of doing some other things. Like yes, we hope that it increases the service. But where I get really stuck on is a review of the cancellation and adjustments. Like the service has been running for a number of years, granted COVID. We, we know that there's been challenges, but, but I feel like we're still reviewing stuff and it's like five years later. I don't know, um, how much more review we can really, we can really do, right? Like whatever is happening, it's not working. So I don't know how to fix what's not working. But to look at it for longer terms and analyze it more, I just, I, I don't know what that's going to do. I can just tell you it's not functionally working the way that it is. However, um, I don't think anybody sitting around this table would ever think that transit should be a, a net zero. I don't think that's the way transit works. I do agree with you as we move into a predicted population of ninety thousand at some point or eighty thousand, whatever that's going to be. Um, we need to offer alternative transportation. It can't just be drivers and, uh, you know, cab companies or. You know, we, we have to be able to get people around. It's just that it's not working. And so for me to wanna throw extra dollars into it to hope that possibly it may work better. Is, is kind of a hard sell. Um, I just, that's right. I am gonna have to really kind of dig down and I'm certainly gonna listen to the comments around the table. Um, because that, that one's difficult for me. And I really appreciate the fact that you didn't come out, you didn't sugarcoat this. This is not about, hey, yay transit. Um, it's about looking at the real facts and, and things that we have to consider. And I'm not suggesting I wanna throw transit away for anybody out there. That's not it. I, I just need more of a practical lens of how we're. What our short term goals are and what, what the outcome is before we start throwing, you know, half a million dollars um, to fix it. And another question for you on the wages, have we thought about offering um, drivers benefits? Cause I think that's one thing that I have heard comparison to other provinces is some of their transit drivers actually offer benefits. And rather than just throwing money at wage, that's something that I don't think any other place around here is really doing. And it might be a way to keep our drivers happier is by uh, by offering them that, just a suggestion. And that's it for now. Just uh, listen to everybody else's comments, but that was a lot of info.
Yeah, um, I think, I'm not sure that there was a question in that first part, so maybe I'll, I'll leave that one and it'll come back around. But the second one, um, our drivers currently don't work for the town. They work for Southland. And so the way that the, they're structured in that organization is their wages are directly correlated to the agreement that we pay. And so there is an inflationary context to that. They, we, that increases by two percent year over year and that's supposed to be translated into driver wages. Unfortunately, because of cost volatility of fuel, that has been impacted. And so that is the factor in there, but we wouldn't have oversight of, of whether or not Southland provides benefits or doesn't provide benefits. Thank you.
Okay, Council Flowers.
Hi, I have lots of questions. We'll see if I can organize them. I read all the stuff ahead of time and I listen carefully, but it's complicated and confusing. Um, so some of them I'll just ask you to try to clear it up in my head. What is a Colt connector?
Those are the, we consider Colt connectors to be the ones that Onnit has chosen to, to pay for. And offer free ride service to connect it on it. And so I apologize if that wasn't clearly stated in the report.
I'd never heard the term before, so I wasn't sure. So we don't have control over that or do we?
We, the increase in hours that Southland chose to put in as a part of that agreement was not a service level approved through council. And so it's a bit of a cute, confusing one for me because it was part of the, um, uh, the agreement. Between Onnit and, and Colt for the regional service. And so it seemed like a nice add-on, but now our community has become reliant on it. And Southland has realized it's not very profitable. So it's a very challenging one to navigate.
Okay, and at, near the beginning, you mentioned that you addressed the driver shortage. But then you said there's problems with not enough drivers. How did you address it?
Uh, w- we didn't address it. Southland addressed it by hiring more drivers during their hiring run throughout September, October and November. Um, but we also recognized during that period that we were drastically out of alignment with other communities. And, and other municipalities in terms of what they're paying. And what we're, what we were finding in that experience is that we, we weren't competitive. And it would be, I think, for the long term sustainability, it'd be important to, to remain competitive.
I see. So it's been over a year. We've been throwing around the idea of a hybrid or having a, um. Permanent fixed route downtown. Is there any way we can just do it without doing a study first? Because we've believed that it's a good thing to do. Um, do we really have to do a study and take another year before we implement it?
The study we were proposing would be um, uh, in twenty twenty three after this report. And then we would be bringing a budgetary ask to be in alignment with that for the twenty twenty four budget to be implemented in January. And so, uh, I'm, I think we do have enough information to implement something of a, of a hybrid or fixed route system right now. We were just looking for an opportunity to make sure that we have a third party, um, supporting us on that. We, we, we just have one community connectivity advisor here.
So the five hundred thousand you talked about at the end that you need, is that to do everything that you were talking about doing it? Or is that just before we even get to the twenty twenty four budget?
That's full implementation, uh, per year cost. So the five hundred thousand dollars would be an implemented in- increase to the on-demand service. For an entire year of operations, not for the remainder of twenty twenty three. And then if there was appetite to move to a fixed route or hybrid system, which I, I sense from you that there is some appetite for that. Um, we would, that would, that would obviously evolve.
No, so that does include anything about the hybrid. Um, do we not ask for surveys every time there's a ride?
We do.
So how come you don't share that information with us?
That's, it's not our, it's proprietary hi- uh, information for, for RideCo. We get the star rating that we're at. So we're at four point seven three, um, stars out of five by the riders that use. Use the, the service.
We don't get any details about what they say.
Uh, the, I, the system isn't set up for asking for details. It's set up with a star system and then like clicking on the, the parts of the service that you liked.
So we wouldn't have a clue how many bikes got hauled around during the summer or throughout the year?
We, we don't, we don't have, we don't actually capture that information, no.
Um, or wheelchairs?
We do have wheelchair information if you'd like that. We can capture that.
Um, how many buses are on the road at one time? We have eight buses, don't we?
The maximum buses we have on the road at any given time is seven, so that we have uh, opportunity to switch out if there's ever a, um, a breakdown. Because once those, those trips are booked, we, we have to be responsive to those trips. If we, if we lose a bus and we don't have a replacement for it, that means an entire bus's uh, length of, or trips will get canceled. And that's not the customer service we're trying to achieve.
Okay, so we know we're not meeting the needs and there's a ton of people that don't get the rides they want. But there's no way to know how many have stopped trying altogether. I suspect that number would be very high.
W- we, we suspect the number to be high and we know on a per capita basis that we are low right now. The, the challenge that, that we're experiencing is, is coming to council and asking for more on-demand to meet latent demand. Or to move to a fixed service because we know that demand is there. It, it's kind of, where do we put the cart in this situation? Do we want to know that the demand is there or do we want to trust the demand is there?
Um, and how does the, how do we save money on the gas if we do it internally? I don't understand that.
We're not saving money on the gas doing it internally. What we're doing is we're creating more consistency out of the agreement with, with uh, Southland. And therefore they have more consistent application of that agreement. So in terms of inflationary driver wages and so, and, and the like.
I think that's all I have for now. I'll let somebody else take over. But I know we need the bus and seniors and youth are our largest needed, needed group, so we, we can't let them down.
Counselor Nagel?
Thank you for the very thorough uh, presentation. I really appreciate you taking um, council's concerns and my concerns uh, serious. And providing responses to pretty much everything we brought up. Um, do we know the number of downloads of, of the app versus the number of unique annual riders? I think to get a good proxy of how many people have given up, we just look at how many people have downloaded the app versus how many people have actually are using it each year.
I, you know what? That's a, that's a really great, um, a great thought there. We'll, uh, we'll look into that.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then did we put any thought into increasing the price of the fare? Um, we have, um, pretty extreme demand and the fare is pretty low.
Based on the re- the Transit Task Force report and, and some of the discussion that I've been a part of. With other communities is most communities are gravitating more closely towards our fare. Um, as opposed to going higher. It, the, the concept is, is that it's the economies of scale. Once you moved into, move into a fixed route system, once you have the economies of scale, the, it's the number of riders that offsets. Not the, not the, not the num- the amount of fare. So keeping the cost to residents low is, is keeping the highest number of people. And also the people that are most greatly impacted by the need for transit are the ones that will be mostly impacted by the increase in fare. So we did not consider that as an option.
And do we just have a flat pricing? It's the same for everybody?
No, uh, seniors and youth uh, have a reduced rate. So two fifteen is the average rate.
Yeah, so what, what I would have in mind, um, for consideration would be keeping like the, the youth and senior rate low. Um, or anybody who, if there, if we had some way of collecting information, anybody who truly needs it. And then just increasing the fare for the people who don't necessarily need it as much. Not just as a revenue generation tool, but as a demand throttling uh, tool, I think would be powerful. Something that I would certainly wanna see if we were gonna move forward with, um, increasing the budget by a large scale. I'd also wanna be making sure we're, um, kind of, uh, the throttling demand is the way I look at it. Um, and then on the third party piece, um, I saw that in our, uh, next steps, there's the option of considering third party versus internal. Are there any other third parties than our, other than our current third party that we're working with that we could consider? Um, competing for this uh, operation contract? Could we put out to an RFP?
Uh, yeah, there are, there are a couple of options. The interesting part of that is that one of those options purchased the other option recently. And so there's that factor. And so I, th- that is, that is an opportunity out there to, to seek that. The reason why we landed on Southland in the first place is because they were so competitive to get into the market. And we were kind of their jumping off point, that I would be very curious to find out if another operator could be as competitive as they are. With the, with their current agreement.
And that's one of my concerns though, is I worry, um, having thought about this a bit more and then uh, spoken with a few people about it. I worried that perhaps, um, Southland has just agreed to provide something really cheap and then they're not able to resource it properly. Is there, is that a reasonable cause for my concern?
I mean. I don't. With the, from the quantitative data that we have, it's not impacting the service to, to the community. But it's certainly impacting the service to us, to administration. And so I would say that where we're challenged with that arrangement is more at the administrative level. Than we are at the, at the service to the residence level. And so it's, it's something that we've, um, been relatively accommodating to. Because it's not, it's not currently being met at the, at the resident level. The other part of it is, is that RideCo is, is a third party that. That uh, Southland has hired. And so as our app provider, they report to Southland and that is also an interesting relationship. And so it would be nice to have a little bit of a more uh, one-on-one, um, operational agreement with our, with our software provider. Considering all of our efficiencies are wrapped into that agreement.
Yeah, and um, just to share, I guess for, with the whole group, I guess public record. Um, following these meetings happening, the media coverage and stuff like that. I've had, uh, people who work, uh, for Colt, uh, contact me, uh, eh, with concerns. Expressing saying things that like the drivers have never been consulted on how to improve this thing. Um, and it's not, uh, I think the fault of town of Cochran administration at this point. But I have just, I have heard that things are not happening that well with our third party. I try to be careful what I say without, um, you know, getting people in trouble, but uh.
If I, if you don't mind if I jump in, Counselor Nagel?
Sure.
The drivers are employed by Southland and the system is operated by RideCo. And the system is constantly with an algorithm in the background updating information. Ev- instantaneously with every ride trip booked, everything that's going on. And where we see a discrepancy in understanding there is that the drivers want to do the thing that makes the logical most sense. And then we end up, um, interfacing incorrectly with the algorithm. So I understand that they have some concerns, but we have to make sure that we're letting the system do what the system is supposed to do. Because that's what it's intended to do.
And that's exactly the feedback that I have received from people is that, uh, the drivers have to just do exactly what this app tells them. And people driving the buses are of the opinion that the app is not telling them what to do properly. And there's literally no room for human, uh, response or creativity or problem solving. And so the drivers are dealing with angry customers and users of Colt on a daily basis, I am told. People get on the buses angry and upset the drivers and the drivers are just saying, well, I have to do what this app tells me what to do. And there's zero feedback from the drivers upwards to whoever's responsible for the whole thing. And it's like we have this chain of command from council to administration to Southland, to RideCo, to the drivers and this app in the middle of it. Nobody understands how it works and uh, it's causing problems. And that's, that's the impression that I've gained from talking to people who are boots on the ground, um, and wish we remain anonymous. Um, but uh, I'm just, look, I'm, I'm here, I've, my interest is, uh, speaking up for the taxpayer on this whole thing. But um, so with the, with the solutions we've had proposed, I would be, I share a Counselor Fred Ekel's concern. That if we just start throwing money at it and we don't know exactly what outcomes we'd have. I would be more interested in skipping all of the medium and short term solutions and just going straight to figuring out how much the hybrid or. Uh, fixed route system would cost. Because I would be worried about throwing money at it. It doesn't get any better. Well, it gets a little bit better and throw more money at it and just becomes like black hole that soaks up money. But I do really appreciate that you brought a whole bunch of things forward. Um, I don't want my feedback to say that I think all your ideas were poor. I think they're, they were, they were good ideas. I'm just a little hesitant of pursuing it until we know the full, the full, uh, the full deal we're getting into. And I have a question, just for information, so don't, I just wanna know the whole scope of it. Uh, not wanting to get anybody, you know, freaking out or anything like that. But should council not wanna continue moving with Colt? What would it actually look like to wind down Colt? Is that a, is that a possibility?
Absolutely. What, what, what it would look like to wind down Colt? I mean, that, that's entirely up to you. Like, gi- give me a parameter of, of what, what you would want that to look like and I'll tell you what it would look like.
So how would we sell the buses? How would our relationship with Southland continue? What would happen with the transit innovation hub that we've built, the building? And would there have to, like, how would it impact staff and the budget and stuff like that? And, and anything else I'm not, I'm not asking?
Simply put, we could put, we could put a stop to it tomorrow. And, and then the, like, Southland would be impacted, so there would be the drivers. And but Southland is operating their own business model on the other side. They probably have places for those drivers to go. And then our internal would have, our community connectivity group would be, would cease to exist. Uh, because micro mobility and, and active transportation probably wouldn't be enough to sustain that, although it may be actually. And then, um, and then the residents of Cochran that re- that rely on, on transit would no longer have that opportunity.
Okay, so I guess the one thing I was, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't like, you know, our, our hands are tied, we're committed to all these financial agreements and contracts.
Yeah, if I may, I was just gonna ask, I don't know off the top of my head, uh, Mitch, if you know if there's any contractual agreement. Is there a ti- time limit in terms of our, uh, with our provider of either RideCo or Southland? As in, we need to give them three, six, nine months notice for, um, ending service? of either RideCo or Southland as in, we need to give them three, six, nine months notice for um ending service?
There would be a notification period for ending the the service agreement, but we do have an out clause with a notification period.
Okay, thanks for the information and that's it for me.
Counsel McFadden.
Thanks, sir. Um yeah, thank you very much for the presentation, there's a lot to digest there and so um I don't have too many questions in particular on the details, except there's a lot there. Um and I think part of the problem we're having with the experience is is um is the expectations, like so when we decided to move ahead with transit, we were like, what is the most cheapest way we can get into transit? And we moved ahead with that. But by and large, I believe the public expectation is not the cheapest, what they want to experience is um like a a full rooted service. Is what they want to experience, that's what the expectation is, but that's not what we've bought. And that's not really what we're committed to doing right now. Um so it's kind of my thought on that with the challenges with it. Um but also with the trend like in defense of the system, I mean, we went with an innovative system, this isn't been done anywhere else. There's been some wins from it, we save a lot of money um during COVID because we didn't have to, we were able to to downsize. Whereas some of the fixed route systems, it was a huge hit, millions of dollars worth of hits to their their budget, so the fact that we were in an innovative experience, um you know, kind of saved us a lot of taxpayer monies during the the COVID piece. Um and but also in that innovative solution, I mean, it comes with risks and it comes with the inability to forecast because nobody's ever been there before. Um so to do the work and to to balance it off, I think it is kind of tough. And there's a lot of learnings in the process that we're going through, so um I personally am an understanding of that, I can understand the frustration. Um but like my seventeen-year-old uses it all the time to get to work and it works for her. Um so I don't know if it's just how how people approach it or that, you know, their expectations aren't necessarily aligned with what the service is. Um and certainly there's there's bumps and there's always rooms to improve it. Um and a lot to learn, but it's just, at the end of the day, we didn't buy into, nobody's committed to a full rooted service of, you know, when we were looking at some of those numbers, I mean to put in a full rooted service, was it three point nine million or something for Le Duke system? Um and I I just think we need to be fair in our analysis, that if we're expecting a full rooted service, those are kind of the big numbers, you know, five point three for Grand Prairie um to put into. Um anyhow, so there's there's kind of my thoughts there, like as I did, in my family's experience, it's been working. Um and I just think we need to be, when we're analyzing it, we're getting frustrated that it's not working, we might have to you know, start understanding that it might require a significant investment and we're not gonna be able to piecemeal it. Um but just to be fair to the to the system and that, and maybe we need to communicate it differently, this is not a on-demand service where it's gonna come to you, it's, you know, you're gonna have to be a little bit planned, so. And those are my thoughts there, I don't really have, I guess, a lot to digest there. Um I firmly believe that transit needs to be part of Cochran's story, for sure. And and what that looks like and how we grow and evolve it, um we're we're gonna have to find that out. But um but but transit provides so many social benefits. It uh pulls, you know, traffic off the roads, it allows those that don't have the finances to get around easier, it connects it, our geography is a very difficult um place to move around. And yeah, so it needs to be part of our our solution, our future. Um I think we were late getting into the game, um but we can't leave it now, it's too necessary a service. Um and it is a service that'll cost us money, just like a pool will. Um and then my only comment, I think, to Counsel Nagel's point, and I appreciate your economic take is like should we raise the fees to like throttle demand back, which um runs in my mind contrary to the philosophy of transit, which is we're trying to lower the barriers to get as many people engaged in using it as possible to make it as efficient a system as possible. Um so that lens, I don't think works for something that's meant to be a service and not a business. That's just my thoughts there, so I'll just leave that on the table as I kind of build some coherent thoughts around your presentation, but I really do appreciate the thoroughness of it.
If I can add one thing, because I feel like I may have not been very clear about this, is that we're not asking to add five hundred thousand dollars of implementable pieces to the service. We're looking to gather as much quantifiable data as we can till the end of the year and then implement a fixed route system based on those data sets that we are earning through this process. We want to look at our late evenings on weekdays, we wanna look at Sundays, we wanna look at at holidays because once we move to a hybrid system or a fixed route system, that information is going to change for us and the way that people are experiencing transit changes and so while we have the opportunity to gather as much data as possible, it's a five hundred thousand dollar per year implementation, but it would look like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the rest of this year to implement for the remainder of the year plus sixty thousand dollars for a study to bring a fixed route system to council. The problem is is that from a capacity standpoint, we just are not positioned to to put together all of a fixed route system and implement that um in this year, it's just not realistic.
And so when you're saying a capacity, that's just a staffing capacity, we just don't have the the people power to manage and the expertise in-house to manage that type of a leap in that short a time.
I I would say that uh with the addition of Yuchin Tang, we we do have the expertise to make that happen, but he's been with the organization for four months and for two of them, he's been working on this report. So you can understand that a lo- there is a tremendous amount of information in this report and then moving over and trying to execute um all of our micromobility needs, all of our active transportation needs and this and and execute a fixed route system by the end of the year may be unattainable.
And so the current strategy is to to continue through the year, not necessarily with any changes or adaptations. Gather that information, analyze it, and then come into the twenty twenty-four budget ask with a plan to get a hybrid system, which would be fixed routes on those that show demand, so probably spray lakes to the school areas or downtown or whatever the data shows. And then a hybrid for the feeder routes, is that how I can wrap that up?
It'd be a little more closely to a regular fixed route system during peak times and then a hybrid system during off-peak hours.
Okay, alrighty, uh yeah, thank you for the data, lots to think about, um but again, I'm certainly committed uh to ensuring that transit is part of our solution, we just need to to analyze the best way to do that, so anyhow, thank you for your report.
Mayor Zidane.
Yeah, thank you. Um appreciate the report tonight, as everyone else has noted, there's so much in there. This is not just a do this and then this will happen and will be uh all fixed. Um very complex issue, but uh I think uh as Counsel McFadden actually has done here um but first, I think I'd like to state that I I believe in transit and that I believe in Cochran's future is uh with a transit system uh in it. Um what I think we need to do is actually, and you've done it in your report, but reflect a little bit on where we've come from. Um and you started to state that terror around um, you know, like we, this community grappled with entering into the transit conversation for years. Um previous councils had a grant in place and didn't know how to spend it for, I think, seven-ish years before we implemented uh Colt. And Colt was really just a way of dipping our toe into the transit world in a cost-effective way. Um but I think you're right, we um the expectation from the community and maybe even from some of ourselves was was here. The system we were implementing was here and this is actually what we were paying for. Um and the or those early days around the Transit Task Force table, we looked at the one point five million dollar fixed route system. Here you go, we could, we could have done that for a one point five million dollars then. Um we did it for a third of the cost and I'm not gonna go through all the history, but that is why we kind of got into this space. Um the the stat that really jumped out at me, Mitch, and maybe I'm reading it the wrong way, but with and I'm rounding up fifty thousand riders um going, if I divide that by three hundred and sixty-five days, that's a hundred and thirty-five people a day using transit. Um that's a, that's, that's a lot of people using transit in Cochran, even in a system that's not meeting the demand. Um so that that really jumped out at me, I appreciate the study, I think everybody is saying, I think it's time. We've talked about fixed routes and the hybrid system for a few years. I understand why we haven't been able to implement it, I think it's time we actually prioritize that and get to the to the answer and then implement that. Um the list of things and options that you've listed, I conceive merit in a lot of them, again, I kind of, I'm I'm hesitant around eh spending more, I know that's not the ask tonight, but um there's a shopping list of uh costs there, which I appreciate, but I I'm also hesitant to know I I guess to spend more until we know what we're investing in um directly. The two things that um that jumped out at me was um increase in fares that Counsel Nagel uh highlighted, I think uh Oka Toks also uh implemented a system similar to ours around the same time. I saw in their budget discussions last fall, they upped their fares. Um so I'd like to see how that, and I know it's gonna be small, if we went up twenty-five cents, it's not gonna change our budget by three hundred thousand dollars, it's thousands of dollars, um but it's something. Um the other one, though, that I haven't seen on the list is a marketing campaign. Um I think to the points that we've been raising around that um really, I think a lot of the challenges that we're hearing about is the perception of Colt versus the the actual Colt system and service. When you start talking about it, and I think this is actually our problem across many boards, not just Colt. Um we don't, and I'm not s- sitting here tonight saying, we have a great system and it's perfect and we should just put our blinders on and not change anything. I think we need to fix the problems of Colt and increase our our ability to access the system. Um that's gonna cost some money, um let's dive into what that actually is gonna cost, but um really, we, I think we need to invest in a marketing campaign about what Colt is, what it can do and how you access it. And really flip the narrative around, uh we have a crappy system. When you look at, I mean, and I hear from people all the time and the one thing I, you didn't really touch on, you did, but uh maybe I'll speak to it more directly was how our business community relies on Colt to staff their businesses, um that is a big uh deal. To have businesses in our community while we're out there marketing and we heard from Mr. Hagan in Greystone. Um those commercial businesses that are coming in are going to need employees that are likely, a lot of them going to need a transit system to get them to work, to and from work. So there's a, there's a balancing act here. I, the way I look at this is, we have a good problem. We have a system that's actually working, um it's not working well enough. Um and when I go back five years ago, when we were talking about transit, we were wondering if we could implement a transit system and would there be enough people to use it to make it work? Actually, our stats are telling us that more people want to use it. So we know the answer to that already, we just now need to make it easier for them to use. So let's um, you know, now now we know. So I think we're actually in a better position and that's what this pilot was supposed to do, was pilot some of these uh transit kind of conversations and and services and and kind of direct us in the direction that we need to go. I think we're headed there, it's been, I think we just need to be patient. And I think uh stewards as of taxpayer dollars, we need to spend them wisely and get a a return on that investment, so I think in summary, if I can, I think um it's it's marketing, fares and that study, I think are the the three. And fares for me is like, let's bring back and see what fares would do. Um but I think um from my perspective, let's let's not enter next year without having a a real clear expectation of what we're we're delivering on the transit system. But I do appreciate your your report tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, I I think one thing I will say is your metric is a bit off because we don't offer Sunday and holiday um uh service, so that's more like out of three hundred days.
Oh, I know, I was being conservative.
I know, and then and then the other side of it is is eh, one of the challenges bringing this report forward is that there's so much data to sift through, there's there's an unlimited amount of information that we can access in terms of how to improve the service and and there aren't low or there there are tons of no-cost options that we have implemented throughout the life of of operating Colt where we can make a tweak to this system uh where instead of prioritizing pickup times, we prioritize drop-off times so that you get picked up at within twenty minutes of when you wanted to, but you get dropped off exactly when you wanted to and 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 we've seen the ripple effects of those choices and we've seen the ripple effects of of making those choices and implementing those those tiny little tweaks to the system and and we continually work to optimize. What we've tried to bring forward today in terms of what something to dissect is just physical things we can change to this the system that are that are do carry a cost and I'm hopeful that that we translated as best we could to to council to understand that how how challenging this this conversation is.
One last thing, if I may, Mr. Chair. Um I would like to see a comparison to Oka Toks. Um they have a almost an exact replica of what we have delivered uh in the exact same timeframe with a community of roughly the same size, I know our topography is a little bit different, but I would like to see a this graph with one more community on it if we could.
It's challenging that they offer door-to-door service, they have smaller units, their costs are different, but yes, I I do understand that they implemented the same month that we did, so it's an important metric for sure.
Just before we start a second round, I wanted to jump in now. So I'm gonna take a whole different lens on this, so I'm going to speak, I think, from some taxpayers who are concerned about well, actually, I go back when when this Colt originally came up, my initial concern was and again, I'm not throwing Colt under the bus, all joking aside. I think Colt is a necessary, or some form of public transit is necessary in our community and as it grows. For me, it's uh the initial, my initial concern was the fear that this thing was gonna take off in terms of costs. And now it's coming to bear. And you know, when I look at this chart, for example, with what you're proposing, we will now become one of the most expensive communities and so your Innisville Uber example actually might be pretty compelling in in relation to where we're going. For me, it's just a, from a taxpayer's perspective, it and I'm concerned that what I'm hearing is that it it's it's public transit at any cost. And there needs to be an associated cost with that, I know you're talking about efficiencies and I think your your projections in terms of riderships are probably optimistic at the very best, because essentially that was the original story or the bill of goods that we were sold when this thing took off, right? Um but I'm, I I I am going to be honest, I think I'm gonna be continue to ask serious questions about why we're doing this in terms of the kind of increased costs that you want. Like essentially, you're almost doubling the budget in terms of uh of what you want for Colt and so like some of my colleagues, I'm, like this is just overwhelming in terms of the information and then to even suggest that we would take it in-house just almost makes me wanna be physically sick, to be honest. I mean, you talk about WCB, you talk about, I mean, even look at the Calgary Transit Union and that kind of stuff, I mean, that's absurd. I mean, even raising it in this conversation for me is just too far out there, I I can't even get my head around it, but yeah, I guess my comments would be, I'm gonna be looking at this carefully from a taxpayer's lens and saying yeah, we want public transit, but not at all cost. I'll turn it over to Counsel for Daco.
Alright. Um and not that I would suggest this now, but this might be a question for administration. Uh some of us sat on the task force originally, myself, I think Counsel McFadden. Um is there a way, and I'm not suggesting it now, but as we research that kind of hybrid fixed route to go back into the task force to make sure that we are addressing the public concerns, because I think that's where I'm kind of hung up on, it's not about getting contrary to where you are, about getting rid of transit, to me, it's just about spending the money wisely that we're not just putting money into a service that we don't know if it's going to actually change anything that we're gonna get, kind of what Mayor said, kind of what Counsel Nagel said. Do we just end up holding off and then investing, doing a study and then going into a hybrid fixed system? Like, I don't know what that is, but I think some of those questions might be uh take it back to the task for- force so that we get some sort of the public input as well as to what is not like, what are we missing out on, is it just the hours, is it drivers, is it more stops, is it less stops, are they too close to somebody's house, like, I don't know what it is. Um but I just wanna make sure that we are gonna get it right, rather than just saying, okay, well, let's try this and we're gonna kind of hope in some ways that it's it's going to address these issues, we're gonna see something, but I just, I I don't have enough of a secure answer on the other side for me to wanna go that route and maybe it'll come, but I just wanted to kind of throw out the task force idea about reinvigorating it even for a short term just so that we can do some of the engagement, which obviously might take the burden off administration as well um from that public lens, it's just an idea, I don't want anybody to hit me right now.
Counsel McFadden.
So, just in response to the task force idea and like and essentially what I think I I I'm hearing you you say is, let's find out from the user experience, you know, where the frustration is. you know, where the frustration is, right? And I was just thinking that the task force is probably not the best tool for that. Um, and since we've just recently started to lean into statistical surveys, maybe that's the space, like, that might be the better tool. So I I'm not just disagreeing with you, I'm just saying that the task force is probably not the most efficient way of kind of finding out the p- the pinch points. Just sharing a thought.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, contribute. Please, like, no, you may not, but, um, this, this, I cer- certainly, just as I've been observing the conversation, I think there's been some really healthy um questions uh that are generated, appreciate the the report, and um as was mentioned uh by members of council and Mr. Hamm as well, this is like a complex and important service and that there's no simple answer as as, you know, the easy button, you can just tap here and uh a- a- and the the solutions are are um, you know, apparent. Um, the, a couple of points that I just wanted to raise is, um, I think we all um have to be very, very cautious to avoid um the anecdotal kind of impacts um to some of the conversation, there's a lot of data, we we do know, um, there's been a consensus, oh, we don't know. We do know a lot, we don't know everything, but we do have data to support why a lot of things are happening and and um uh a- and so I just wanted to kind of make sure that 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 part of it was clear and the recommendations that are being driven um through that data are based on um two things, one is what we have learned and the interest of gaining more data so that we can understand how the system functions and make effective decisions going forward, which includes the efficiency of the service as a whole a- and the user experience. Um, a- a- and so um I think that that for me has just been really, really, really relevant because um I have my own kind of personal bias as a, you know, a- as a family who has used COLT to both sometimes very great effect and to sometimes very great frustration, I can put myself on both sides of that e- equation as 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 a user. Um, and so just trying to back away from that and make sure that we're f- we're flowing through um the data wherever possible a- as we make those decisions. Um, a- and and then also I just wanted to say that I think there's opportunities here um to make decisions as w- as we go forward that, um, first of all, let's let this rest for a bit, and we'll we'll come back as administration and continue to add some uh nuance to this conversation and and some more specific asks, I even noted myself is like, ooh, what's the specific outcome we're kind of targeting with um some of these pieces, and it became clearer to me um as the conversation progressed, but one of the apparent um options, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mitch, is is the opportunity to implement a temporary um i- increase to some of these service areas to gain um that data point to influence the long-term budgetary decisions, i.e. what would, what what might happen in twenty twenty-four. Um, there's also the opportunity to consider, you know, things like draw- drawing from existing reserve accounts to fund that, so that there's not a necessarily a direct taxpayer um i- impact to to make sure we can um gain the analysis we need to to do that. Um, I also wanna just assure, you know, to Council Reed's point, that certainly um tr- transit at all costs is certainly not our our interest or our approach there, and I'm, I don't, I don't mean to suggest that you were were saying that, but um we are very cognizant of the, you know, um capital and operational costs of running a transit system. Um, and and we have in front of us this opportunity to kind of decide in a way that many communities are already committed to these systems. Um, and so being open to um tho- those variety of outcomes. I I think for me, it's very compelling to think about the idea of doing that study to lay out those options in front of us, the hybrid and or fixed route. And the fixed route traditional system may end up being the right option, I'm not saying it's not. Um, but I don't wanna kind of jump to that conclusion without gaining a a little bit more of of an insight there. And perhaps maybe the the other thought that was really relevant to me is I really do believe that one of the core COLT problems we have is an expectation problem, as in users' expectations are not matched up with the actual service. Um, it's, it's totally fine to have a fast food hamburger versus a, you know, filet mignon if you are expecting a fast food hamburger, but if you're expecting the kind of high-end user experience um when there's the um lo- lower end uh budget, that that's a problem. Um, this started to me right from the very beginning, when the name of the service is an on-demand service, when it's actually more of a dynamic routing service. And so let's stop referring to it, that that to me would be number one thing we should do is stop referring it to it a- as an on-demand service, because it's not in my opinion, an on-demand service, and so spending some um time in the early going, trying to impact expectations of what the system is, the user experience then improves because people's expectations are more in line um with what they're actually gonna experience, and that can come, um, you know, relatively little or no cost, perhaps some marketing um costs that may go i- into that, but matching up expectations of what the service is um with people's experience, I think, might be one of the most fruitful um exercises we could undertake.
Second round, Jeff Tideman.
Yeah, thank you, I, no further questions, I just think um what I would leave counsel with is um, what does success look like for us? Is it about ten thousand more riders, is it half a million dollars? What's the metric that we're trying to meet, um, each of us, and I think if we go away and kind of contemplate that, um, you know, is it to be uh the most frugal system, you know, I mean, we, I don't wanna rehash the whole conversation, but um what is it that will either push you over the edge or or have you support something? Um, and I'm I'm talking to all of us, and I'm asking myself the same question, like, what is it that I'm trying to see here, is it um the best in, you know, in the province, um, you know, that would be a metric that we could shoot for. Is it financial, is it, you know, what is it, but what does success look to, like to each of us, and then I think that's the question we're trying to answer in the in the community.
While you're thinking about that, I have just one thing to add. We've been trying internally from an administrative standpoint to move away from the word subsidy. Subsidy implies that we're funding something that can't fund itself. And we've tried to move over to the community investment language, trying to think about things of what we invest in in our community. We invest in roads, we invest in parks, we invest in rec centers, we invest in all kinds of different things in our community. But there's, but the intention of transit isn't just to get people from point A to point B, it's to reduce the congestion on our roadways, reduce the number of people that are driving on our roadways, reduce the wear and tear on our roadways. We don't subsidize roadways, that's a community investment. We're not subsidizing transit in our community, we're creating a community that has a list of micro, of mobility options, and and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to convince, I'm trying to do the same thing that we've done internally, is is change the dialogue towards being, this being a community investment for people that need it, and and I really do think that this, that, you know, of the hundred and sixty people per day that get to utilize this service and and have an opportunity to to use it, four point seven stars out of five is our rating out of the people that actually use the service.
Council Flowers.
I do agree with you, I think how we phrase it means a lot, words have a lot of power and it is an investment, and we certainly have spent lots on roads the last few years, no doubt about it. So um investing in people getting to work, getting to school, getting to their sports or their socializing, whatever, is very important. So for me, success is a reasonable amount of dollars, but way less complaints, because I do hear good things, I hear, I get a lot of people writing or sending notes about how much they appreciate COLT, but so many examples that they could get one way, but they couldn't get the other way and and just gave up and don't use it anymore, so. Um, pe- getting people where they need to be and at a reasonable cost is success for me.
Yeah, it's hard being chair, and then I'm like, I'm trying to summarize this, so I I would agree with Council Flowers. For me, it it uh, if the town is having to subsidize this at at thirty-five dollars a pop, then 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 that's not appropriate, right, that we haven't found the right balance for me. Um, and again, I'm not against COLT or public transit, I don't wanna say COLT because it is really more public transit. It's trying to find a solution that actually is affordable, so I get all the, all that you're saying, uh, Mitch, but for me, it's it's a balance, right? What, like, we have, I don't wanna cite another example, but there is another example in the town, in our community uh that the town is paying for to subsidize, and I think it's getting cost prohibitive in terms of that service. And I don't want COLT to be in that kind of position, and I think there are a lot of taxpayers who probably feel the same way I do. They accept that public transit is a necessary, is necessary in terms of our community, I don't wanna say necessary easel, but a necessary in terms of our community, but at what cost? And what I've heard so far is that it doesn't matter what the cost is, except for now that there's some some semblance of reality that that maybe we need to be, you know, this thing can't get out of control, and that's just my perspective on it, and again, I'm not, I mean, and subsidizing, you know, summarizing what council's saying, thank you for your presentation, it is complicated, there's a lot of information here. And we will need time to uh to effectively digest it, so. I think that's a a wrap. So I I'll count, yeah, we're adjourned.